Good evening and welcome to the Oxford Board of Select meeting, August 30th, 2022. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and I'd like to start off by saying I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so at this time, to avoid an appearance of conflict of interest, I am going to recuse myself from the executive session that we're about to go into, and I'm going to turn the meeting over to Amy, so she'll run that. I will be leaving the room. I think that's the way, I've always done it before, when we recuse ourselves, we should really leave the room. That way, no one can say we have any kind of influence. So I'll be leaving the room, and Amy, when you guys are all done, just text me and I'll come back up, okay?
I'll stick to plan.
And we'll resume the meeting at that point. You want the hammer?
Sure, I'll take your hammer. We will be going into executive session under MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21a3. Purpose three is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. S&amp;K Development LLC versus Board of Selectmen of Town of Oxford at all, docket number 2185, C as in Charlie, V as in Victor, 0131, 4 A as in Adam. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session under MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21a3.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Before we call for the vote, I just wanted to state that the board will be entering into executive session to discuss a legal matter with advice from the town's attorneys at KP Law. Just wanted to make sure that the members are aware that KP Law will be in attendance at this meeting and advising the board, and I want to bring this to your attention, Mr. King, because you have previously stated that you cannot and will not take advice from KP Law.
Amy, can you just wait and let me dial the attorney?
Yeah.
You're not in executive session yet.
Right. As stated by town council, they represent the board, not individual matters, and as such, council has no conflict of interest in this matter.
Why?
If that's their position, you know, that's really between them and the bar, you know? It's not my conflict.
I just wanted to make sure that you are aware that they will be advising the board as we are entering into executive session.
Yeah, I've already notified them that I, you know, that I don't consent to that, but, I mean, if they keep doing it, like I said, it's between them and the bar.
I will take a vote to enter executive session.
Yes.
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 Yes, I believe it needs to be a roll call vote, correct?
Usually, yes. So you call.
Hi, Tom. This is Dee. We're just in executive session now. Can everybody just state that they can hear the attorney?
They need to do a roll call in.
Oh, roll calling in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Dennis?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And Amy, first of all, yes. We are now in executive session.
I'd like to call the meeting back to order. There are a couple of things we need to do. First thing is that we want, I request the board to approve the town manager appointment of A. Russell Pitco and Terrence A. Cummings to the Oxford Historical Commission for terms beginning September 1st, 2022, expiring on August 31st, 2025. Looking for a motion.
I will make that motion.
I will second that motion. Robert, who seconded first, Robert or Dennis? Oh, I don't care. Robert did. Robert did, all right. All right. Beat the old man, Robert. All right, now we have a motion to second, and I'll call for the vote. Amy?
Yes.
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 I vote yes. Let the record show five in affirmative, no negative. Mr. Pitco and
Mr. Cummings have been appointed, and we want to thank them for offering their service to the town. Also, appointment, this is a request for the board to appoint Nancy Loner, Republican Register of Voters, with a term to expire on June 20th, 2024. Looking for a motion, please.
I will make a motion to appoint Nancy Loner as the Republican Register of Voters for a term to expire on January 20th, 2024.
I'll second. Dennis will second it. I will call for the vote. If there's no discussion?
Yes.
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 I vote yes. Let the record show five in affirmative, no negative. We thank Nancy
for her being the Republican Register of Voters. Next one, looking, this is a request asking the board to grant the use of Jaws &amp; Park for a Public Safety Day to be deducted, to be conducted by the Oxford Police Department on October 9th, 2022, from 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., with a rain date of October 15th, 2022. Looking for a motion.
I make a motion to allow the Oxford Police Department to hold their Public Safety Day on October 9th with a rain date of October 15th, 2022.
Second. I have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote.
Yes.
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 I vote yes. Let the record show five in affirmative, no negative.
Next one.
What are we waiting for? Skip.
We have to wait until 7:00 for her to come in. And, let's see, we'll go for the next one. This is a request from the planning board, and we request that the board refer the articles submitted by the planning board for the October 5th, 2022 special town meeting back to the planning board in accordance with MGLC 40A-5. Looking for a motion to refer these articles back to the planning board.
I will make a motion to refer the articles back to the planning board in accordance with MGL Chapter 40A, Section 5.
Second. Okay, any discussion?
I just, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to remark that I think these are a great idea for the town, and, you know, my understanding was it was, you know, coming from Tony Sousa and Peter Dogg, and I think they're great.
Thank you. All right, I will call for the vote. Amy?
Yes.
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 I vote yes. Let the record show five in affirmative. Articles referred back to
the planning board. And I think that's it. We have the dog hearing coming up at 7:15, and we have someone coming in at 7:00, so at this point, we'll go in recess again.
We'll be in recess until 7:00. I make that motion.
Second. Okay, I'll call for the vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. We're in recess. Open the meeting here. First thing we have, we have an application for a weekly entertainment license on a Sunday entertainment license for the month of October to conduct a spooky walk event requested by Darcy Cook, Smash It 2 LLC 6B Boulder Parkway, North Oxford, Mass. Ms. Cook is asking the board to approve a weekly and Sunday entertainment license for October 1st, '22 through October 31st, 2022, to conduct a spooky walk event at 6 Boulder Parkway, North Oxford, Mass. Ms. Cook currently has a business at the location known as Smash It. She will cease regular operations of Smash It to conduct the spooky walk event. Ms. Cook indicates the days and hours for the spooky walk to be Thursday and Friday, 4:00 to 10:00 p.m., Saturday, 12:00 to 10:00 p.m., and Sunday, 12:00 to 8:00 p.m. If the board decides to vote on the affirmative in the request, the board may want to consider adding conditions to this motion. Board of Selectmen approval is contingent upon the approval and by any condition set forth by the police, fire, and building department, as well as police details suggested as required by the police department. So if the object would like to come up and give us kind of an overview of what they're looking to do, I appreciate it.
Sure.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Darcy.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, Darcy.
So we are asking for those entertainment licenses. We are a new business here in the town of Oxford. We sat before the planning board just a few months ago and got everything approval. Halloween is one of our big events, and so with the space that we have and the new location, we thought it would be really great to not only do an indoor but an outdoor element. So we're asking, we're blocking off our parking spaces, and we've been working with Deputy Chief Sellers and Patrick here, going through every element of indoor, outdoor, safety, fire, bathroom, access, lighting, like, we've literally checked every box of the state regulation, as well as their expectations on a local level, through every phase, including fire, you know, flammability, and, like, all of those elements. So we've been working closely under their supervision to put our plan together. We've drafted it up, we've presented visuals to them, as well as bullet points out of our staffing and our safety program that's going to go with it. And so, so far, we've had no obstacles or hiccups in the plan. It's been moving pretty straightforward, and so we come before you today to say we'd love to put this great community event on. We're pretty excited about it. Our staff has been looking forward to it. We've done it in the past, and we hope that we can do it here in North Oxford.
Just for the record, I just realized this, that Ms. Cook rents from a relative of mine, so I think to avoid any appearance of conflict of interest, I'll turn this over to Amy, and she can finish the public hearing. All right?
Okay.
You can pause me.
Okay. I'll come back in three minutes. Does anybody else on the board have any questions for Ms. Cook?
Where is, how would you get to this? By what entrance? Off of Route 20 or off of Route 56 into Boulder Park?
So we, they can enter either way. None of those roads are going to be blocked off. All of that parking is going to be available. The landlord and all the tenants are informed. The reason that we're running it, the days and times and hours that we are, is because the operation of all the other businesses will be ceased during that time. So we've communicated with all of our neighbors and putting that plan together. We've, we're controlling the number of people on our property because we're only selling 50 tickets an hour. So if you average it out, four families to it, right, we're basically talking about anywhere from 15. Let's say if they came two as a couple, no more than like 20 or 25 cars on the whole property at 6 Boulder. And those will rotate out. So they will come in, it's a walk, they don't stay and hang out, it's not a party, they move through the event, they participate in the activities through that event, and then they transition themselves off of the property. So we've done it in our blocks to control that.
Right.
Did that answer your question?
Sure did.
Okay.
And I'll tell you, my girls are going to love it.
[laughing]
They love those spooky things.
Oh, I know.
They do.
All I was going to comment, Madam Chairwoman, is just that unfortunately, the public doesn't get to see the packet, but we saw what you put together. It looks very good, very comprehensive, and a lot of thought went into it. We appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
Tim?
I just had one question. I'm sure it's probably being taken care of with all the other officials who are guiding you on this, but on that, with what he was referring to, it says no vehicles be allowed beyond that point?
Yes.
Do you have, like, a solid structure that's going to be in place rather than just, like, a ribbon or?
Yep. No, hor, you know, the horse, what are those things called, Joe? Horses?
Stanchions.
Sorry, this is Joe, my brother, who's all...
We're going to have an entrance way that's going to come in to bring people officially in, and then right there, we're going to have sawhorses.
That's what it's called.
Someone who's going to be present there, because that's going to be the access for in the case of emergencies, in the event that there was, they would remove the sawhorses, and that gives police, fire, anyone access into the facility.
The space. So it's separated it with a physical marking.
Okay.
Madam Chairwoman, could you just ask, could you state his name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you state your name, please?
I'm sorry, yeah, Joe Cicarelle.
Can you?
Smashes.
Spell it? Can you spell?
And address?
And your address, please.
12 Island B-Y-L-U-N-D Avenue, Auburn, Mass.
Thank you.
No problem.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Good luck.
So I would entertain a motion to grant the special permit for the weekday entertainment license and Sunday entertainment license for the month of October with the approval of the Oxford Police Department, the fire, and the building departments.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, I'll call for the vote.
Yes.
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 And I vote yes. It's four in the affirmative, one up to one.
I do have another question. Most of the tickets you buy online?
All tickets, I buy online.
Online, okay, so, because I know they're going to ask me.
Yes, yes, everything we buy online.
Madam Chairwoman, it's not a special permit, right? It's just a weekday entertainment license.
Weekday entertainment license.
Just an application for it.
It's weekday and Sunday.
Yeah.
Yeah, so should we restate that, Dee, for the record?
I think she said, oh, weekday and Sunday, didn't she?
Yes, she said two separate days.
Okay, do it again.
I would entertain a motion for a weekday entertainment license and a Sunday entertainment license for the month of October to conduct the spooky walk with the approval of the Oxford Police Department, the fire, and public building departments.
I will make that motion.
Second.
I will, oh, discussion at all? Okay, call for the vote.
Yes.
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 And I vote yes. That's four in the affirmative.
You got two approvals.
We really like you when we do it twice. Twice is nice, right?
That's right.
I appreciate that.
Want to go for a third?
No, no, my luck is in my favor. I'm all done. All set?
Thank you.
All set. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Enjoy.
Thank you. Have everyone come visit.
I know one family that will.
All set.
Do I have recess until 7:15?
I sent him a text, yeah.
Do you want to recess until 7:15?
Yeah, we can't, we can't do anything until 7:15.
Okay, we are going to recess until exactly 7:15 for the public hearing on the animals.
Good evening, and welcome back to the Oxford Board of Select meeting. We are about to have a public hearing regarding a dangerous dog. Dogs' names are Stormy, Diesel, and two nuisance dogs, Harley and Cash. The dog owners are Katie and Dean Benway of 48 Walnut Street. And I'd like to read into the record the public notice pursuant Chapter 140, Section 157 of the Massachusetts General laws, the Board of Selectmen has received a dangerous dog complaint regarding Stormy and Diesel, and nuisance dog complaints regarding Harley and Cash, all dogs owned by Katie Benway and Dean Benway of 48 Walnut Street, Oxford, Mass. A public hearing will be held regarding this matter on August 30th, 2022, at 7:15 p.m. at the Oxford Town Hall, second floor meeting room, 325 Main Street, Oxford, Massachusetts. And written comments from the public will be accepted before, during, before and or during this hearing. So the public notice has been read. I'd like everyone who is going to be testifying tonight to raise their...
We're going to open.
All right, yeah. First of all, I move to open the public hearing. I'm looking for a motion for someone.
I will make that motion.
I will second it. Okay, so I have a motion, I have a second. I will call for the vote.
Yes.
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 I vote yes, so the public hearing is now open. At this time, I'd like everyone who is going to be participating or speaking tonight to raise their right hand, and I'm requesting that anyone who wishes to speak on the matter raise their right hand to be sworn in. Do you, Stormy, swear to tell the truth, to hold truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Swear.
Okay, thank you very much. You are sworn in. All right, Kelly, if you could come up and give us your presentation and found out what you've come up with regarding your investigation at this time. We're not looking for a recommendation yet, we're just looking for information about your investigation, and thank you for coming in tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So on or around the date of April 30th, 2022, Mario Cabrera and his wife Jennifer Carr were doing yard work at their home at 49 Walnut Street. Their six-month-old son was also outside in a stroller. Three large dogs from 48 Walnut Street, and in parentheses, the Benways own three large American Bulldogs and one smaller French Bulldog, came running into the yard at 49 Walnut Street and started jumping on Ms. Carr in the baby's stroller. The male owner, Mr. Dean Benway, from 48 Walnut Street, yelled at Ms. Carr to just grab them by the neck, and then proceeded to get his vehicle in order to capture the dogs and confine them in the vehicle. And a little bit later, well, you see that there's some attached statements by Mr. Cabrera and his wife Jennifer Carr. Mario Cabrera and Jennifer Carr are here also to testify a little bit later. I just wanted to show you some pictures of the dogs right now, just so you know, as we're talking, which dog is which. So the dog all the way on the left, I thought I'd be able to use this clicker to point to him, but that's Diesel. The dog right to his right is Harley. She's a female American Bulldog. The dog to the right of her, the tan dog with the red scarf, is Stormy. She's a female, about two and a half, three years old. And the dog all the way on the right in the pajamas is Cash. On July 18th, 2022, at approximately 12:00, I received a call from the Oxford Police Dispatch, Oxford Police Department dispatch, that there was a loose tan pit bull type dog running around huger on arms at 23 Wheelock Street. My assistant, Ed Hart, and I went directly to Wheelock Street and searched for the dog, but did not find it. Ms. Denise O'Malley at 23 Wheelock Street stated that she was walking her miniature Schnauzer mix, Larry, when a tan-colored pit bull type dog started to follow her and her dog, and she was concerned for the safety of her dog. I also spoke to Craig Erickson from the Oxford Housing Authority, who saw a dog fitting the same description running around loose. When I sent Craig a picture of Stormy on August 6th, 2022, he identified her as the dog that was loose on July 18th, 100%. I do have Craig Erickson here to testify as well. On July 19th, 2022, at approximately 5:30 p.m., Ms. Allison Martin from Lester, Mass., arrived at 48 Walnut Street to look at a bike that was listed for sale on Facebook Marketplace. The seller of the bike, Ms. Katie Benway, 48 Walnut Street in Oxford, Mass., had communicated with Ms. Martin and was expecting her to come look at the bike. Ms. Martin opened a gate to the deck so that she could knock on the door, when several dogs, at the time Ms. Martin thought there was five or so dogs, came running through the door and started jumping on Ms. Martin, scratching her legs and barking loudly. Let me just see, I'm trying to find a picture of the house so that you can see what the deck looked like. Oh, scroll through that. So this is the house at 48 Walnut Street. So the, you can see they have a front door, and then they have the side door with the little deck on the side and the gate for the deck. So Ms. Martin, and, like I said, she's here to testify as well, so she can go into more detail, but she went through the gate and went up to the door, and the dogs, the door, the wooden door was open already, but they have like a screen, but it's like a curtain with magnets that hold it together, and the dogs came out of there. And started jumping on Ms. Martin, scratching her legs and barking loudly. A whitish-colored dog then latched onto Ms. Martin's right forearm until Mr. Dean Benway pulled her off of Ms. Martin's arm and got the dogs into the house. So these are the injuries that Ms. Martin suffered that day. The picture on the left is her right arm the night that the incident happened. The picture on the right is still her right arm, but it was taken in a mirror, so it looks like it's the left arm, but it really is the right arm. That was the next day, so you can see that there is quite a bit of swelling and redness there. And if I didn't say it already, Ms. Martin is here to testify as well. So in this particular injury, we'll go to the next picture. So all the way to the right, that's the inside of her arm, and the other wound was on the outside of her arm. So there's one really good puncture on the outside, and then two lesser punctures on the inside, so three punctures altogether. And the pictures of the legs are all the scratches that she got from all the other dogs jumping on her. So this dog was identified to me by the Benways as Stormy, a two-and-a-half-year-old female American Bulldog, light tan and white. The other three dogs owned by Mr. and Mrs. Dean are, and we did go over this a little bit, but a male American Bulldog, Diesel, four and a half years old, gray-colored with a lot of white on his legs, chest, shoulders, neck, and face. And we'll go back a little bit. So that's Diesel, and if you look at him right from the front, he looks almost all white, but if you look at him from the side, he's got a lot of gray on his body, and it's important that you be able to identify him for when we have, show a video in a little bit, because it's, there's a lot of dogs running around, and it's a little tough to tell. And this is Diesel on the right and Harley on the left. And that's Stormy in the kennel. So she's a little bit older now than in this picture here. She looked like a little bit puppyish in that picture, and she's a little bit older now. Okay. His right eye is blue. And then there's Harley, a three-year-old chocolate brown American Bulldog with white on her legs, chest, and face, and Cash, a two-year-old black and merle male French Bulldog with white on his chest. All of the dogs were up to date on their rabies vaccination, but they were not licensed yet because the Benways had just recently moved to Oxford, and the dogs were licensed on 7/27/22. I enclose a copy of their rabies certificates and their licenses. I spoke to Ms. Katie Benway on July 20th, 2022, regarding her dog Stormy being in quarantine for 10 days, starting from the day of the bite. I informed Ms. Benway that Stormy had to be on a leash with an adult in control of her every time the dog went outside to relieve herself. When I delivered the quarantine form, all four dogs were out on the deck, the deck with the fence around it, which is not really that high, unsupervised. I saw someone open the door, the inside door, and bring three of the dogs back inside. I couldn't tell who it was because that screen was still there, and I couldn't really see who it was, but Harley was left outside. I knocked on the front door to speak whoever brought the dogs in, but no one answered, and I left the quarantine form where we agreed I was going to leave it. And then I texted Mrs. Benway to make it clear to her that Stormy could not be outside unless she was on a leash and supervised, which I did tell her, but I wanted to make sure she understood what I meant. And she texted back that it was only Harley that was on the deck. I'm sorry, when they brought the dogs in, they brought three dogs in, and Harley was left out on the deck, but the other dogs were all out on the deck. On Monday, August 1st, 2022, at 9:45 a.m., Ms. Samantha Hendricks reported to the Oxford Police Department that she was walking her dog on Linden Street when a beige pit bull came charging down the middle of the road at her and her dog. Ms., that, so that's a report that she gave to the police. When I called her, she made it clear to me that she made a mistake about Linden Street. She said she was actually on Walnut Street, which Linden and Walnut run parallel to each other. She stated, when the dog charged at her, she picked her dog up by the harness and kicked the pit bull, she called it a pit bull, and screamed at the dog to make it go away, and the dog did go away. Ms. Hendricks stated that she was actually on Walnut Street when the incident happened, and that she recognized the dog because she walks by it almost every day. Ms. Hendricks stated that the dog lives at a house on Walnut Street that has several other pit bulls, and they are always out on the fenced-in deck on the side of the house. And that call was call number 22-15411 to the police department. On Wednesday, August 3rd, at approximately 1:40 p.m., I was dispatched to the area of 48 Walnut Street for a dog attack. When I arrived, three of the dogs involved in the attack, Stormy, Diesel, and Harley, were contained in Katie and Dean Benway's vehicle, and the victim, Ms. Amanda Hansen, was on a stretcher about to be taken to the hospital. I spoke to Officer Mercia, Officer Osmus, Sergeant Grenette, and Detective Ibrahim, and they informed me that Amanda Hansen and her two daughters, Juvenile 1 and Juvenile 2, had come to visit Katie and Dean Benway, and that Ms. Hansen and her four-year-old daughter, Juvenile 1, were attacked by the four dogs owned by the Benways. Officer Osmus is also here to testify on behalf of the Oxford Police Department. Okay, so... Can you see them, the videos? So, I'm trying to think if I should...
Do you want to pick which ones?
Yeah, I can pick which ones, sure. So these videos were taken from cameras located at the Cabrera household, which is number 49 Walnut Street, and it's not directly across from 48, it's kind of kitty corner across from number 48. Okay, so this is one view.
Before you start, I believe that there is some language in these videos?
Not in this one, yes, but, yes, there is one video. Not in this one, yes, but yes, there is one video. I'm going to show you all the videos, we are going to come back to them, and I'll stop and explain who's in which video and stuff as we go along. And then there's the same view, I'm sorry, the same section, but it's a view from a different camera. According to the witnesses, Mario Cabrera and his wife Jennifer Carr, the four dogs owned by Katie and Dean Benway were involved in an attack on a woman and her small child, Juvenile One, on the street in front of their house. Ms. Carr, you saw Ms. Carr with, she had on the white outfit, she went running out and took Juvenile One from Ms. Amanda Hansen and started heading home to her home for shelter. The dogs then shifted their attention from Ms. Hansen and followed Ms. Carr and Juvenile One. Mr. Cabrera then ran out and witnessed two of the dogs, Diesel and Stormy, knocked down Ms. Hansen, pouncing on her, and biting her on the legs, stomach, and arms. Mr. Cabrera pushed the dogs away and assisted Ms. Hansen into his home. The four dogs barged their way into the breezeway at 49 Walnut Street and continued to try to attack Ms. Hansen and knock down Mr. Cabrera, causing him to injure his tailbone and scratch his legs. So we're going to see, this video, you have to really look at the, I'll do this one twice, because if you're looking right in the middle of the screen, you're going to miss pretty much all that happened. So you're going to look all the way to the left of the screen. And I will explain this one a little bit, because I'm going to play it again, so. So this is the Benway house over here, and this is Ms. Hansen's car. She was, came to visit, and she got out of the car with one of her children. I don't really know where the other little girl was. I've, we've been asking, I'm thinking that she was still in the vehicle, and I'll tell you why in a minute. But let me, I'm going to start this. Let's make this stop right away. We'll go back a little bit. So right here is, this is Katie Benway, this is Cash, the little French Bulldog. That's Stormy. That's Diesel right there. This is Amanda Hansen. This is Mario Cabrera, helping everybody into the house, and his wife Jennifer holding Juvenile One. So they're all trying to run in the house to get away from the dogs, but the dogs are Mr. Cabrera managed to get Diesel, Stormy, and Haley out into the backyard, where the dogs circled around the house until they were secured in Mr. Benway's vehicle. There is an expletive at the very beginning of this next video. So that's Diesel, Stormy, and I'm going to stop that in a second. Okay, so Stormy's the tan dog down at the bottom left. Harley is the black and white dog, well, she's actually chocolate brown and white to the right, and Diesel is up here. He's white with a lot of gray on him. And then there's one more of, so this is Diesel outside, just kind of like circling around, still kind of excited and looking. And then he banged on the door, and I'm stopping it now because the Benways' little son came over to try to get Diesel. That's who was calling Diesel there. Ms. Hansen suffered several bite wounds to the leg, it says legs here, it should say leg, impossible injury to her abdomen. Juvenile One suffered a bite wound to her right buttock. And I have to go back to the slideshow. So these pictures here, they're a little, they might look a little fuzzy or whatever, but these are pictures of the vehicle that Amanda and her daughter came out of, and I believe that the other daughter was still in the vehicle, at least for some period of time, and there's scratch marks all over the car from the dogs trying to get into the And this is Juvenile One, where she got bit on the buttock by, I was told, by Stormy. At the time of the incident, I was informed that Stormy was the dog that bit both of the victims. When I spoke to Mr. Cabrera, he stated that he was positive that Stormy bit the victims, and he thought that Diesel may have also, but could not be absolutely sure of that. I spoke to the Benways, and they agreed to bring Stormy to the kennel to complete her 10 day quarantine. Unfortunately, I was not able to speak to the victim, Ms. Amanda Hansen, because she did not return my phone calls, text messages, or my letter sent by, I sent a letter by regular mail and certified mail, I did not hear anything back from her. And it should be noted that Ms. Amanda Hansen is Ms. Katie Benway's cousin. On August 11th, I received a written statement from Mr. Cabrera, which reports that at 2:46 on August 3rd, so this is the same day as the incident, approximately an hour later, he saw Diesel dragging a leash and loose in the yard of the house directly across the street from him. Mr. Benway followed the dog and grabbed the leash and brought the dog in the house. Mr. Cabrera caught the tail end of this encounter in a video on his phone, so I'm going to just go to that. I'm going to, I'm going to show this again, and I'm going to stop it. So what it appears to me is that a girl came out and handed a leash to Mr. Benway, and he put it on Diesel, and the other boy has a dog in his arm, and I'm not sure if it's Cash. I think it's probably Cash because he's the smallest one, but possibly it could be Harley? Not positive. But then I also received, on August 23rd, 2022, I received an email statement from Ms. Nicole Berry-Codare, reporting that she saw the dogs running loose after the attack had taken place. So she sent me the email on August 23rd, but she saw the incident on August 3rd, after the attack had taken place, and you do have that email in your packet. On August 24th, 2022, Ms. Gail Sanders, 51 Walnut Street, reported seeing one of the dogs run off and then being taken home by the male owner of the dog approximately a half an hour after everyone had left the scene of the attack. And I have a statement from Ms. Sanders, too. She also witnessed some of the initial attack and called 911 to report it.
Can I conclude your investigation? I'm going to open it up to the board right now. Any members have any questions for Kelly at this time before she, before we go on to the next phase? Amy, I'll start with you. Do you have any questions?
How much of the yard is fenced in?
Of the Benways?
Benways house, yes.
So they have kind of two fenced in sections, the front, and I do have a lot of pictures of that that we can go over. I can show you right now if you would like.
Sure.
Yeah.
It's part of the answer to the question.
Okay, so let's go back. Okay, so this is, let me back up one minute here. So this is a picture that Ms. Martin took right after she was bitten by the dogs. At this point, I can't really see a beware of dog sign in the window to the right of the porch there, and they did install a new one right on the door of the deck. But, oops, sorry. So right now, they have a beware of dog sign on a tree, which is to the right of, I'm sorry, the left of the driveway, which if there's no cars in the driveway, you can see that pretty good, but if there's cars in the driveway, it is hard to see that until you're right up at the house, you know, at the gate. So now this, the sign on the left is in the window that is to the right of the deck. Okay, so we'll show that in a second. And now they do have this sign on the front gate as well. Okay, so the deck area goes back to the pool, so this is on the, if you're looking at the house, it's the left side of the house, and that extends along the side of the house, and it goes back to the pool, and I believe that, yeah, they have a hot tub there, too. That fence from the, from the deck up is about 38 inches. If you're looking at it from this view, so, I'm sorry, right here, the deck opens to the backyard, and if you measure it from the ground up, you know, that's considerably higher, but from the, if they're on the deck, the dogs, it's a pretty short fence. This was under the deck, and they did have fencing, you know, blocking that off. Oh, okay, I don't want to jump ahead too much, so I'll just leave that alone.
So on the fencing on the rest of the yard, so after they get off the deck?
After they get off the deck, they come out into the backyard. I don't know the exact proportions of it, but it's a decent sized backyard. So in the way back, they have that solid wood fence, and there's actually some added fencing on the top, so it's even higher there. That's at least six feet high. And the chain link fence that they have in other parts, like right here, and around, you know, like almost three sides of the yard, is four feet high, and that's Katie Benway standing next to the fence. And they do have locks on the gates right now, because I think, they think what possibly happened the day of the incident, they have like these, like Ujus that come down on the pool, and they think one of the dogs bumped it up. So they have padlocks on all of those now, so that...
Padlocks only at the top?
Yes, where the latch is, yeah. And that's the end for right now.
Anything else?
I think I'm good for it now.
I'm all set right now. Robert?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Through you to ACO Flynn, are any of the animals still in your custody?
I have, I have Stormy in my custody, because I didn't feel as though, and I did talk to the Chief of Police about this as well. It's a public safety issue at this point, there's been no order issued as far as, you know, what, what needs to be done at the house to make it more secure for the neighborhood. So Stormy is still down at the kennel now.
Is it true that when you spoke to the owners, that you said that you were going to hold Stormy for the 10 day quarantine?
Yes, which I did.
So did you inform the owners, obviously, that you were going to keep the animal after that 10 day period?
I did later on, when I collected more information, and felt that it was a real danger to the neighborhood to return that dog at this point in time.
So my understanding is that there is a fee per day for the town to hold the animal? Are we waiving that, since we?
There is for the quarantine, but not after that.
Okay. Those are all my questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Robert. Tim?
I just have one. The deck we see here from the front, is that continuous to the pool in the back? Because I see it's the same material. Does it go all the way back?
Yes.
Okay, and outside of that, the dogs only have access to that fenced in area off that back right side?
Yes, there's no door for them to go out to the backyard directly from the house, so in order to get into the backyard, they would have to go on the deck.
And then through another, out the gate from the back deck to that other fenced in yard?
Yes.
Okay. But there's nothing that's not fenced in in between the deck and that fenced yard?
No.
Okay. That's all I have.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I should actually ask this now while we have the ACO.
So my understanding is that on August 3rd, the, your belief is that they escaped to that black fence around the back, or that fence right there in the front?
Well, Katie made a statement to the police department, from what I understand, that she thought that the dogs bumped the latch open, I believe on the chain link fence, because there's no latches like that on these, on the wooden fence.
Thank you.
Can I have a go back? Now, since the dog has been in your custody, what's the demeanor of the dog?
When she first came in, she was like very subdued. I think it was a strange environment and everything. She's definitely more outgoing, but she does send me mixed messages. Like sometimes she's wagging her tail, and she seems, you know, kind of friendly, and then sometimes she barks, you know, a little bit aggressively. I have not handled her yet. We have an indoor-outdoor situation with a guillotine door, so if I need to clean inside and set up her food and stuff, you know, I say, "Stormy out," and she goes out, and I shut the door. I'm down there by myself most of the time when I'm cleaning and everything, and, you know, we just had an ACO in Lunenburg that was mauled by a dog, to the point where he was on life support and life flighted out. It was a very bad situation. So I'm, especially when I'm by myself, if I don't feel 100% comfortable, I don't handle the dog.
Excuse me, Norman. I have a question. Can you go back to your videos? You showed us the video where they were picking the dog up, supposedly had, who was it, Mr. Cabrera, I think, saw him running around with a leash on, and then the owner came and took him. That fence looks like it's in the front of the yard. Am I missing, I mean, can you go back to that and explain that fencing situation? Okay, yeah. Now, that fence right there, that's, is there a fence there that I'm seeing or no?
I think you're seeing the inside of the window, because he's filming it from inside the house.
Ah, okay, okay. So there's no fence there?
Not in the front part of the yard, no.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry. Thank you.
That's a little grainy, so it's a little...
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
No, I'm good, thank you.
I'm all set for now. Thank you very much for that detailed report, I appreciate it.
Okay.
All right, we're going to move on. At this time, I'd like to...
I'm sorry, is it okay for people to come up in the order that you're interested?
Well, first of all, we're going to have the dog owner come up and speak.
Yeah, it's up to you if you want to hear from the dog.
I'll hear from the dog owner first. They want to come up and make a statement. Are the dog owners here? Good evening.
Good evening.
You need to state your name and address, please?
I'm Katie Benway. I live at 48 Walnut Street in Oxford.
Okay.
Dean Benway. I live at 48 Walnut Street.
Okay, sure. Okay. What do you got to say?
The first instance was, I feel bad about the whole thing. If I had known that Allison was coming at what time she was coming at exactly, I would have been standing on my deck. I never expected anyone to breach over my deck, open the gate, and come onto my deck. I just didn't. I have a front door, I have a doorbell, I never expected someone to actually come up onto my deck, and I do feel bad about what happened. It shouldn't have ever happened. Again, if I had known she came, she was coming to buy a bicycle, if I had known exactly what time, it would have never happened. The second incident, I never expected my dogs to be... The second incident, I never expected my dogs to be able, I never knew that they could get the gate open, I never knew that they could hit the latch and get the, get the gate open. Completely my fault, I should've had locks on all my gates prior to anything happening. I just never realized that a dog could actually...
Pop it out.
Pop a lock up like that, and, uh, I, I feel like it's, it's my fault. They are my registered, um, emotional support dogs, I'm on disability.
We have a letter from his doctor to...
I have a letter from my doctor saying that, uh, that I need my dogs. Again, I, I feel bad about the whole thing. Um, I wish it never happened. I wish I knew now what, you know, I, I, I just didn't realize that dogs would be able to do that. Um, I, I take full responsibility for everything that happened. Um, it shouldn't have ever happened.
And my cousin doesn't wanna sue me, that's why she didn't, I don't think, returned any of the phone calls. She didn't wanna get involved with it, and she doesn't wanna press any charges against me. Luckily, thank God, if she's okay and her daughter's okay. I do know, I think her daughter had a minor, from what she wrote me in texts, that her daughter got a minor bite, which was still wrong, but I don't know if that blood on her shorts was actually from Amanda carrying her, or if it was actually the dog bite.
Yeah, I, I just, I wish it never happened to their family. I would've never let any, you know, I don't wanna see anybody get hurt, never mind family. You know, I just, again, I just, I feel totally responsible for the whole thing.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Yeah, you, you wanna...
Can I show you something?
You know what, sit down for a second, we have a couple of questions, I'm sorry. And we will take those documents, you know, but we'll make copies and come back to you. Sure, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, so have the dogs exhibited a lot of aggression in the past? And not, you've had them for a while, right, since they were babies?
I have a hard time hearing.
Have you had the dogs for a long time?
Uh, I've had my...
Stormy since she was born.
I've had Stormy since she was born. She was born in my, in my house. I actually, she was stillborn, I brought her back to life. That's why I feel so close to her. Diesel, I've had for, I think Diesel's four and a half now.
Eight weeks old.
And then, uh, Holly is three and a half, they're a year apart, and Cash is two.
Two and a half.
So the dogs have been together for a while?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, they've, they've always been together.
And have they shown this aggression in the past, or is this something new?
Stormy's the one that gets a little hyper, and it's hard to control her.
She needs to be fixed, I...
I'm gonna get her fixed if we do get her back.
Diesel and Holly are fixed. She's not fixed yet, and she's coming into heat. And not that that's an excuse, but she's very excitable when she is...
I had my other two dogs done at Second Chance in Sturbridge, and I've been calling them, calling them, and nobody gets back to me, I don't know.
It's difficult to get an appointment to get...
Right. How long have you lived in Oxford? When did you move?
We just moved in May.
In May, so it's only been a few months for them, they're still...
Yeah, we moved in, uh, May twenty-fifth, I believe it was.
Do you think you should have a, um, chain around the bottom of that gate too, so they can't push out from the bottom, especially if you have three?
Yeah, they...
The mine pushes out sometimes from the bottom, you know?
The way the fence is, it's secured, so it doesn't have any real give to it. Like, that's why I put the locks on, the, the padlocks on, so they, they can't get out and...
Tell them about the fence that we have, we're planning on putting a fence in the front yard.
I've already talked to a fence guy to put a...
Front door.
A fence from the front door, all the way down the walkway, uh, four and a half-foot fence. That way, if they did come out that front door, there's no place for them to go. I'm gonna put a gate at the end of it, so they can't, they can't do anything. I've talked to a fence guy. Hopefully, he comes out this week, depending on his schedule. So, that's our plan.
All right, um, Dennis? Robert, you got any questions for the, uh, for the, uh...
Uh, yes, just one, Mr. Chairman. Um, so you don't, I, my understanding is that you don't believe the dogs ever escaped through the gate on the deck? It's always been through that other gate, or is that not accurate?
Um, they have gone out through the side gate one time, I think...
When we first moved in?
When we first moved in.
We were moving things in and out, and, uh, they, they have gotten out, but I've always gotten them right back.
But that was it.
They haven't gone like, they haven't been...
I don't understand.
Gone to the point that I don't know where they are. You know, I've gone after them and brought them right back. I haven't let them run, you know, run around the neighborhood or anything like that.
You, um, you talked about installing the fence. Um, my understanding, the fence would kind of be like at your property line in the front and go from one side to the other. Could you describe that a little more?
The fence that I wanna install?
Yeah.
You see where the front door is?
Yes.
I'm gonna put the fence, starting on, if you were looking at the house on the right-hand side, where the stairs are, on the right-hand side of the stairs, I'm gonna come out, uh, I wanna come out eight feet, and then I'm gonna go all the way down my walkway, which would be to the left of the house towards the driveway. And then at the end of that, I'm gonna put in a, a gate. So there'd be no, and my deck, the front of my deck is up higher, so I, it'll be, they'll be totally contained if they wish to ever get out again.
So you're planning on having a fence go kind of follow the walk?
Follow, follow the walkway.
At least four feet high.
All the way down to the end of my deck.
Okay, the, the, um, black gate that we saw depicted, is that on the right-hand side of the house? Where is that black chain link?
The black one, yes, that's on the right side of the house, in the whole back of my yard.
Yeah.
Except for the back where there's wood, there's a wood one too.
If you look at the right side of the house, if you go to the back of the house, there's a, a four-foot gate, or a four and a half-foot, uh, fence that perimeters my whole backyard. And that's the gate they came out of. It's got one of those horseshoe, uh, latches, and they, one of them had knocked it up and, and now I, now there's a padlock on it.
Okay, and so this new fence would be basically a second barrier after the gate on the deck?
Correct.
Uh, thank you, that was all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, Rich, Tim, uh, Robert?
Um, just kinda doubling off that, um, with the fence, with the new one that you're planning on doing, do you, do you intend to do anything, any type of like self-closing or raised latches so kids can't grab, grab it or anything?
Actually ordered, um, the hinges that have a built-in closer on them, uh, I've just ordered, Home Depot was out of stock, and I just ordered them for, uh, any gate that they can, that goes to the outside, I've ordered those hinges, so they'll automatically close no matter what.
Right. Yeah, that would, that was, that would be my concern, that if, if they have the ability to open the latch, that if the lock's forgotten, that it would still give, you know, it would, self-closing, it would relatch itself and provide some resistance even if it didn't latch.
But right now, like I said, there's a, there's a padlock on every gate in the, in the yard. Even on the front gate, we, we actually got the idea from Kelly, she uses a, uh, thing for your keys, so you put it through the hook.
Right.
That way, you know, they can't.
Um, who, who in the family really ha- has kinda, is there anybody that the dog listens to more? Like, like who gives, who gives the commands?
You know, you give the commands.
Oh, yeah.
Mostly. I mean, I do too, they listen to me. I use a shock device on the end.
It's kind of a mutual thing, but...
Right.
Mainly me, I, I do pretty much.
But they, the dogs kinda listen equally, whoever in the family is, okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
That's fine.
Um, as a follow-up, um, when do you think you'd be able to have that fence installed?
I'm hoping that the, the people that I call, the fence company, uh...
You want to have some info? It, Friday, we're supposed to pick it up.
Yeah, Friday, he's supposed to come out.
So maybe this weekend, we'll have it installed.
If, if everything, you know, depending on his schedule, how busy he is. But that's what I'm hoping for. I'm hoping for Friday.
I don't, I don't think I have anything more at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So we're talking a four-foot chain link fence? Is that what you're getting?
Actually, it's a wood fence.
Can I show you a picture of it?
Sure.
This is the picture.
And while she's doing that, do you, have they dug under any fences? I mean, that's another thing that's sometimes...
No, they don't dig.
So they don't dig underneath?
They're not diggers. Can I come up?
Sure, sure.
This is what the picture looks like.
Okay.
That's gonna be the gate. This gate's gonna look the same way.
All right, thank you. You can show it to the other members if you want. Thank you.
It's a little over four feet high, it's like four and a half feet high. That way, I figure that way they, it's the same, it's the...
Thank you.
Hi there. I apologize.
We'll send you the bill.
Yes, send us the bill.
I actually have one last question.
Sure.
Are they jumpers? Do they jump?
No.
Would they be able to...
No, I've never seen them jump.
No, they...
Never.
The one that jumps the most is Cash, and he's about this big.
Yeah.
So...
Anything else from the board?
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I need to be more organized.
You don't have to apologize, ask it quietly while they're here.
Um, through you to the, to the Benways, um, are you familiar with the dangerous dog statute? Has anybody ever talked to you about that?
She gave me the information on a dangerous dog.
Yeah, Kelly just gave it to us the other day, a couple of days ago.
Okay, um, so you didn't, after the first incident or anything, you weren't really aware of kind of like what the rules are, kind of what the...
No, not until I just got the information and...
I think it was last, um, I saw her this past Monday or Saturday, I can't remember, it was one day, this past week, I saw her.
It was the end of last week, I believe, I think it was the Thursday or Friday of last week, Kelly, uh, gave that information to us.
Did you, um, did you ever have issues with dogs before you moved to Oxford?
No, no, we didn't have any issues before.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I don't have any other questions, so at this time, I wanna thank you for coming up, and, uh, I'm gonna open up to the public.
Okay.
Um, if you come up, give your name, an address, and, uh, we'll listen to what you have to say. Remember, you're all under oath, and, uh, I'll go with Chief Masalonas first. Lieutenant Masalas, I'm so tired, I'm sorry. Uh, before we go any further, Mr. Chairman, if we may, can we hear from Officer Osmis, uh, who was one of the responding officers that day, um, to give you his perspective and as, as far as what he had seen and the police report itself? Yes. Thank you. Okay, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Officer Daniel Osmis with the Oxford Police Department, and I'm here just to talk tonight about, uh, my response and the police department's response in that day. Approximately thirteen or one thirty-six PM on August third, the Oxford Police Department received several nine-one-one calls for a woman and a, and a child being attacked by multiple canines. All the responding cruisers were then updated that the attack was actively happening, um, as we were en route. I arrived on scene, uh, I was probably the first cruiser on scene, I believe, and when I arrived, the attack had stopped. There was one dog that was still roaming around in the street in the front area, and the other dogs were contained in the, uh, party's vehicle. Upon further investigation, I met up with Mr. Cabrera, and I was led into his home, where I observed the two victims to be seated on a couch. Ms. Hanson had, uh, a significant bite to her left thigh with several puncture marks. Her daughter was seated, the four-year-old was seated on the couch too. She was upset. Uh, at that point, we weren't aware of any injuries that she had. Um, at that point, I assisted with the paramedics with getting Ms. Hanson on the stretcher and get her into the ambulance, and as we were doing so, uh, I noticed that the four-year-old young lady had blood on her, on her pants, and, uh, the paramedic on, onboard the ambulance was able to, we assisted each other with, uh, diagnosing what her injuries were. I actually do have a picture of that injury, I'd like to show the board, Chairman, Mr. Chairman, if I could, uh, and we will take this picture right back. It was a substantial, uh, three puncture wounds.
This is a four-year-old?
Correct. The, uh, the victims were assisted by Oxford EMS, and they were taken to a local hospital, I believe it was Hubbard, uh, where they were treated. After further discussion with Mr. Cabrera and his wife, uh, I can't state enough that the swift action taken by Ms. Cabrera, Mr. Cabrera and Ms. Carr probably ultimately kept this situation being tragic if it wasn't for them. As was stated in the, uh, testimony by Ms. Flynn, when Ms. Carr was able to retrieve the child and get the child into the home, and Mr. Cabrera was able to assist the female victim into the home, uh, the adult female into the home, the dogs made their way into his home. So there was an active attack going on in his home that he had to, he had to forcefully throw the dogs out of his house into the backyard. And actually, while I was there on scene, there was actually, one of the dogs was still in his home. When I was talking to him, I actually thought it was his dog, and he goes, "No, it's the neighbor's dog, it's not my dog."
Any questions for the officer?
I don't.
No, no, I, I wanna know if there's any questions.
I got one.
Go ahead, Tim.
Um, where were the, the owners of the dog when you arrived?
Uh, Ms. Benway was outside, I know there was the one dog that was outside, that was still loose, uh, her and her children were trying to retrieve that dog, and the other animals were in, secured in their car. And then at some point, Mr. Benway arrived, he must've been at work, and she must've called him. At some point, he did get to the scene, but it was after everything was done.
So there were multiple people from that household trying to gather the dogs up?
Uh, Ms. Benway and then a couple of her children, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, may I, on behalf of the Chief of Police and myself, male control, all members of this police department, it's our responsibility and obligation to protect the public. What we witnessed that day was on call for, that was horrific. And I might be a little biased because I live in that neighborhood, and talking about jumping, the dogs don't jump. They jump, they're all over the car, the car was all scratched. The child was in the arms of the mother, the dog was jumping up, biting a child in the buttocks. The mother got bit as well. If, if this board doesn't go with the recommendation for male control or this police department, okay, that we're obligated by statute to protect our residents, I've never seen so many people turn out for a public hearing for a vicious dog. Usually it's your owner, and one person gets bitten. Some of these people, I recognize from my neighborhood, and I don't even know if they're here to testify or if they're just here for curiosity's sake. But I can tell you this, as a resident in this town, and I live at Five Willow Street, and I have three young grandchildren, my wife doesn't even walk that neighborhood anymore because of this. My officers that day, when they responded back to the police department, Officer Osmis and Mercia were shaken beyond belief, because if they hadn't gotten there when they did, or the Cabreras and his car didn't react the way they did, that child would've been mauled. No doubt in my mind, would've been mauled. And as a previous owner of two large rottweilers in that neighborhood, not one complaint. Not one complaint. They've all been through canine school, they've been trained, Mr. Lamarche lived in that neighborhood, could walk with his wife and his children by my neighbor, by my house, never have a problem. That's all I hear about is these dogs. Never heard about it until, until when this all came out, and next thing you know, I'm picking up the log, I'm seeing forty-eight, forty-eight, all the time, over and over again. So do we wait until a child is taken by the neck, and then we're gonna do something? I don't care if you think the dog doesn't jump or not, you saw the video, you saw the video. You need to do the right thing here. I'm an animal lover, lived on a farm my entire life. And the way it sounds here is, we're just going to put up a fence. And some might agree with me and some don't, some like me and some don't. Why? Because I'll tell you right from the shoulder, the dog needs to be put down. That's in the Oxford Police Department, Animal Control.
Before you leave, can I just ask you one question? Since Stormy has been in quarantine, have you had any complaints about the other three remaining dogs, or...
We haven't had one. I mean, I'm listening, the first complaint we have was in April, April 30th.
No, I mean, since Stormy has been...
Nope.
So, everything's quiet since...
What we've done is we've removed the alpha from the pack.
Okay.
The next one in line is Diesel. Just watch him in the backyard, circling, hunting that backyard. I've had dogs, large dogs, protective dogs in my life, I know what they're supposed to do when they're trained. These dogs aren't trained for that, but that's a pack mentality. You remove the alpha, he's going to look, and one of those dogs is going to look, so who's taking over? Because who's supposed to be the alpha when you're raising dogs is the human being, not the dogs themselves. You don't have, and I saw, I don't even know these folks at Benways, I'm sure they're great people, okay, I'm sure they are. Watch their demeanor, they're not alphas. They're not. They're dogs, run the household. Come on, right after the incident, three of them, the dogs got loose, they're roaming the neighborhood.
Any other questions for...
Yes, I'm sorry, Lieutenant Marcelonis, I'm sorry.
Another question.
I would just like to say, Mr. Chairman, that, you know, so we ask these questions, and we haven't really made a decision yet, we haven't even heard the ACO's recommendation, but we're required to give a fair hearing to all the parties, and I would encourage you not to kind of...
Mr. K, I understand that, I really do, believe me, I do, okay? And it's emotional, doing this job for 30 years, okay? And like I said, I'm come from a different fabric maybe than most people, this is made of wool, okay? This is a burlap bag, all right? I understand it, I've been to court a number of times, I know how to testify, okay? I know how to take my lickings from a judge and everything. I listened to what, the questions that were asked and how they were asked. Take it how you want, sir, okay? The dog, these neighbors, need to be protected. That's what you pay us to do. That's what you, I've sat here for 30 years through four promotionals, and listened to them say, "I don't know, I'm a carpenter, I'm a junkman, you're the cop, you know what to do." We're telling you what to do. Animal Control is going to make the same pitch to you, tell you the same thing. Yeah, I'm emotional over this. This should not have happened. Should you, you want to talk to parade them all up here, whoever's here to testify? Have at it, that's right, that's within your right. I am telling you, I live in the neighborhood, I've seen these people, and they have four dogs that size, three dogs out of the four, that size, American bulls. I know what they are, okay? They need a firm hand, they need to be disciplined and corrected immediately. If not, they will run the roost, there is no doubt about it, had plenty of them.
You're speaking as a police officer, right, for the police department as well as a...
Absolutely.
Right. So, this is the police giving...
We bring our canines in, canine doesn't know me, he steps to me, you're firm, discipline right away, I'm not even his handler. He's going to react.
Thank you. Any other questions for the officer? All right, anyone else want to come up and... Kelly, if you want to tell us who should come up, that's fine. Then you just tell us what audio you want.
Craig Anderson, Erickson to come up. Craig is a, works for the Oxford Housing Authority, and he saw Stormy loose at the housing authority.
Good evening.
Hello there.
Craig, just give your name, what you do.
Craig Erickson, I work maintenance for the Oxford Housing Authority on 23 Wheelock Street.
What do you got to say?
Nope.
Well, just like Kelly said, Man Control, like, I was going in the garage one day, the maintenance garage, and I had elderly female come up to me, and she had her dog, and she was very nervous, and I'm like, "What's the matter, what's the matter?" She's like, "Well, there's this big pit bull running around here, chasing me around with my dog," and I'm like, "Really?" I'm like, "Okay." So, I go outside, and I'm looking around, and there's the dog. So, I'm like, "Oh, okay." So, she goes over toward her house, and the dog goes the other way, and then all of a sudden, it came back. So, I'm like, "All right, I'll call Animal Control," I called the police department, I had Animal Control come down, and the crews under standby until she came. So, as I was doing that, I went around the building, around the maintenance garage, over toward Denise O'Malley's house, I believe she was the female that came to me, and I seen another woman with another small dog, and there was that dog, Stormy, again, over there, going at them again. So, they were kind of screaming, "La la la," and then the dog took off. So, I went back into the maintenance garage, because they went in. I'm sitting in the maintenance garage, the door was open, and about five minutes went by, and then all of a sudden, I look, and there's Stormy in my garage door, coming in the garage, into my maintenance garage. I'm sitting there, I grabbed a broomstick right away and ran at it. "Get out of here." And then it ran, and it ran up toward like the backside fence behind the garage, up toward Izzy Doors, and I lost it. I don't know where it went from there, and then Kelly showed up, we all looked around, we couldn't find it. And basically, that's all I have.
Was the dog aggressive to you, like when he was coming in the garage?
It wasn't aggressive toward me, but I mean, it came in the garage and started coming at me, not aggressively or barking, but I don't know what the dog is going to do.
Absolutely.
I thought it was a pit bull, to be honest with you, I didn't realize it was, you know, whatever Lieutenant Marcelonis said it was.
Okay.
So, I was kind of nervous.
And that's quite a distance from Wheelock, Walnut, that's not just the neighborhood.
Yeah, I think, to be honest with you, I think I've seen the dog one other time too. But nobody made a complaint back then about it, it was probably three or four days before that, I seen the dog in the Wheelock area. Now, obviously, Huguenot Arms 23 Wheelock is all elderly people. If this dog's in a bite, a small girl, and a woman at 48, Walnut Street, what's it going to do to one of our elderly people? And that's why I called right away. Because it's my job, not only to fix things, but to protect the elderly. So...
Any questions?
Yeah, this dog didn't, this dog didn't have a leash.
It did not, I didn't see a leash on it, no. It was just running freely through our complex. Which, I mean, a lot of the elderly people do have dogs, and sometimes one of their smaller dogs get loose, but they get them. We don't, we have like a cat and dog policy there. I think they can't have a dog over so big, but, so you don't usually see dogs like this in our complex.
Right.
So, when I did see this dog, and then she came to me, and I was like, "Oh," and then I looked, and it was a pit bull, and I thought it was. Again, I didn't know, so...
Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, are we going to hear from the owners again at the end?
Yes, we will, I will let them speak.
Just so they know, so that they...
We got to go through the process here, and that's what we're doing right now. All right, any other questions?
Questions, no, neither.
Thanks, Greg.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Kelly, next.
I would like Ms. Allison Martin to come up next and make her statement.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Allison Martin, I'm from Scott Lane in Leicester. I did write a account of my incident, so I'm just going to, more summary and answer questions for you. Mr. Benway had mentioned that he didn't know that I was coming, or what time. I would disagree with that, because I was texting back and forth with Mrs. Benway. And when I did, after the incident, she said, "I'm sorry, I was in the bathroom at the time, otherwise I would have been watching for you." You know, I arrived at the scene, or at their home, the bicycle was right, if you saw the deck, the bicycle was right next to, leaning up against the steps. And the door to the house, or the back door there, was open, and I could hear people speaking. You know, and just growing up in Leicester, Rochdale, you know, we all went to the back door all the time, and so it was just kind of, just made sense to go there. There was no signs, no warnings, no nothing. It took me, I actually was in the car for a minute or two, I was going through, getting the money out, because I was going to buy a bicycle for my granddaughter. And so, I, when I got up onto the deck, I started to approach the door, and as mentioned, it was just like a screening. And so, I was actually looking for like a doorknob or, yeah, a doorbell, but I didn't see one, and all of a sudden, the dogs just came out at me. And it was really hard, it was, they were all jumping up on me, on my legs, and so, I've lived with dogs, I've had four or five myself, so I'm not typically nervous around dogs, but they were jumping up on me, I had shorts on, so they started scraping my legs, so I was putting my hands down just to try to calm the dogs, let them smell me, and they started biting my hands. It was at that time that I took a step back, I believe I put myself up against the wall of the house, and I couldn't tell which dog it was, and it was happening so quickly that I was just reacting, and that's when one of the dogs latched onto my arm. And so, it was kind of shocking. Mr. Benway came out, and the only thing he said to me the entire time was, "What the, are you doing on my deck?" and swearing. And so, he took the dog off my arm, fortunately. I can speak of another incident of American Bulldogs with a family member afterwards. But, so he brought the dogs into the house, and Mrs. Benway was still outside with me, my arm was covered in blood, and she was yelling to him, saying, "We need to get some bandages for her." And so, he didn't come out, so she went into the house, I went up to my car just to get some paper towels, just to stop the bleeding. And she and I spoke for a while afterwards, put four Band-Aids, the puncture wounds. And I explained to her the story, that we have a family member that raised American Bulldogs in Rochdale. And it was a son that was raising the dogs, and the parents would take care of them and feed them. And the mother had come out to feed the dogs one evening, and the dog latched onto her thigh, and the husband had to come out and strangle the dog to death. She's gone through four surgeries for that dog. So, I explained to her, "I'm petrified that your dog's going to attack a child." And she herself was saying, "Well, you shouldn't have been up on the deck," and I'm like, "Well, there wasn't any indications that there was even dogs." She brought me around to the side of the house and pointed to a sign that was facing the neighbor's yard for a warning for a dog, and she stated that they were having issues with the neighbor, and that they had just moved there because they were having problems with the dog at an apartment. So, kind of, what, they were saying that there were no other incidents, at least this is what she said to me. Whether or not that's true, I don't know. Being attacked by the dog was sort of traumatic, I was kind of surprised by that, because I'm not usually nervous or whatnot, but the following day, my arm swelled up, I ended up going to the doctors, I ended up going on antibiotics. I had limited use of my arm for about four or five days, it was really painful, much more than I expected. So, I can only imagine what that child, what it's like, because the puncture wound here in particular, pretty much my forearm completely swelled up. I never heard from them as to how I was doing or whatnot. You know, I probably got $60, $70 in medical bills and whatnot. I hadn't pursued it. In retrospect, I wish I did, because the insurance company would have come in and done something about it, so... It's about the size of it, so...
Any questions? For anybody?
I know.
I have one.
Ken?
Where on the property were you when you were bit? Were you inside on that deck, or were you escaping to the...
No, I had, I was approaching that side door, so I, as Mr. Benway stated, I reached in, there was a little flip latch on the back edge of the gate, you know, and I started to approach the door, and that's when the dogs just come funneling out, and they immediately started jumping on me, and then started to nip, and then it progressed really rapidly into a full attack. I'm not sure if, I know that the one dog latched onto my arm, the other dogs were, at least one other was biting my hands, because I had, both hands were getting bit at the same time.
So, did all, did all the bites take place on the property, or...
Yes, all right there, within 30, 40 seconds.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I was just wondering if I might be able to come up with the...
Yes.
...just in case we have to show the videos.
Good evening.
Hello.
Give us your name and address for the record.
My name's Jennifer Carr, 49 Walnut Street.
My name is Mario Cabrera, and I reside in 49 Walnut Street.
Okay. What's your assessment?
Or should we read our reports?
Yes.
Okay. So, the first one that had happened was, I had said around the date of April 30th, I wasn't exactly sure of the date, but I was in the front doing yard work, and my son, who was probably around six months old at the time, I had him in his stroller so I could do the yard work, and three of the dogs came running out from 48 Walnut Street into the yard, jumping onto the stroller and onto my legs, I, they did not, oh, sorry. I didn't, they didn't bite or anything, but I did have to kind of knee them away, and they kept jumping. The male owner had come into like the street and said to you, "Just grab them at the scra for the neck," and one of the children had come into the yard to try to grab them and, you know, apologized. And then it took one of their vehicles coming up in front of the house to get the dogs into the car and under control. So, that was the first incident, and then on August 3rd, I was in my living room with my nephew, who was visiting at the time, and we heard screaming outside, I looked outside, where I saw multiple dogs jumping up on to Amanda Hansen, and I saw a young girl in her arms, so I just ran outside to try to grab the girl after I heard Amanda stating that she was being bitten. And once I took the little girl, the dogs started to bring their attention to me, so I had to kick them off of me. And that's when Mario had come outside and...
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Can I just show those two videos again so you can show, see what she's talking about? Sorry, things are between you, okay? So, this is the first scene, which, that's Jennifer running with the white shirt on, running towards the melee. And she grabbed right there, she grabbed juvenile one, and see, as she's walking away, you could see the dogs following her now. They were, they were interested in the child, okay? Part of the reason could be the child was screaming, which, who can blame her? I don't know if she had already been bit at that time, but that high pitched noise, and I actually do have a dog trainer that's here today that can maybe explain in more detail, in a little bit, dog behavior and some of the things that were going on here. So, I'm not going to show you who's who here, because it's too far away, we'll go to the next video. And there again is Jennifer running towards the other, I'm going to go a little bit further. Okay, so, right, sorry, this mouse is a little funny, right there is Katie grabbing a hold of Stormy. So, she did grab a hold of Stormy, and she did have a hold of her for a little while. Here is the mother and daughter. Here is the mother and daughter. Here is Diesel. And then you'll see Cash and Harley are both dark colored dogs in these videos. And they're just kind of milling around. I really didn't see them jump up on anybody. So let's start it again. See, do you see Diesel jumping up, 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 like numerous times? And if you see right there, I'm sorry.
Is that Stormy? Still attacking the lady?
Nope, because at that point Katie has Stormy. There's, there's Diesel jumping up on the baby, and now Jennifer has the baby.
Oh, and the homeowner has Stormy.
And, I'm sorry, I keep...
And the homeowner has Stormy?
Katie has Stormy at this point.
Yeah.
So, we'll see that one more time. So Katie has Stormy right there. I'm sorry, yeah, Stormy, see? And the other two dogs are just kind of milling around, they're not really participating. If you see Ms. Hansen right here, right before that, she went like this to her abdomen, and then she kind of looked at her down towards her leg. And then the dogs start following Jennifer and Juvenile One. Now, aft, right after that happened, Stormy must have gotten away from Katie, because right after that, they, Stormy and Diesel knocked down Ms. Hansen, and were pouncing on her and going at her on the ground. And I, I want to reiterate again, like, I get goosebumps every time I think about, if these two people were there, I don't know what would have happened. It's very, very frightening. And in a little bit, I would like Melissa to talk a little bit about the attack and, you know, what the dogs were actually doing. And I will let these guys talk again right now.
Before you go, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
The first incident on April thirtieth, you were in your yard?
Mm-hmm.
With your child in the stroller?
Yes.
Six months?
Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure I heard that correctly. Thank you.
So that's where I'll start. On April thirtieth, around noon, my wife and I were in the front yard. She was doing yard work by the front door. I was in the driveway cleaning her car. I looked up and seen three large pit bull or Bulldogs running from the neighbor's yard and into my front lawn, straight towards my six-month-old son, who was in a stroller. The dogs jumped up on my baby's stroller and on my wife. She had to nudge them away from the stroller. I came and told them to leave, and they ran down the street. The owners had no control and weren't present when they ran near my baby. His name is Benjamin. They come, they came, drove in front of my house, and opened their car door, and the dogs were into the vehicle. They did not apologize or say anything, and left us feeling as this would assuredly happen again, as there were no repercussions on that dog's behavior. So that was on April thirtieth. And then on August third, at one forty-seven PM, I was in my garage, and I heard two little girls screaming for help and asking for their mother. And a lady was screaming, "They're, they're biting me, they're biting me." A couple days earlier, I heard there's like a elementary school, and kids sometimes pass by our house. So I thought it was that. But after thirty seconds of hearing the little girls just scream, scream, I figured it was more than that. I ran, "Oh, they're, they're biting me." One child, I ran outside, and I seen one child was thrown to my wife. And I ran outside and witnessed two of the dogs knock Amanda down flat. And then I seen Diesel and Stormy on top of her, biting, jawing open with their mouths, and intentionally wounding her stomach, arms and legs. I tried for minutes to push the dogs away from the victim Amanda, so she could run, and the dogs would continue to bite her and leave blood. For minutes, I wrestled three, three, three of the dogs, and I pleaded with the lady to please run and run towards my house, and she couldn't walk because she was hurt and traumatized. I told her to run to my house. I had to help her, and the dogs ran in after her in my entryway. The dogs would not leave my house. I was knocked down and fell on towards my, towards my kitchen step. And they, and they were like right, right next to my door. They scratched my legs and my back. I yelled and pushed them, and they continued to attack the lady. I was able to open the back door and push them out. They circled around my house and went to my door banging and growling, looking to, looking to re-enter my house through the back door. The lady entered my house, Amanda, and I asked her to take pictures, and she immediately said, "Oh, that is my cousin who owns those dogs. I'm here because I have nowhere to go. I came to stay with my cousin, and the deck door must have been open, and the dogs began to attack me and my daughter." The victim was bleeding on my couch, and we attended to her wounds, offered her and her children water. At two forty-six PM, once she left in the ambulance and the police left, I recorded a clip of the tail end of their huge pit bull running loose in the neighbor's yard. Second time in one day that those dogs were loose. Also, when the owner of the dog, husband, came towards the street at the end of the initial attack and where the police were, he did not acknowledge or speak of anything towards us or the police. Instead, he went tapping on the car window of the dogs, playing with them. And I honestly don't, like, I understand that it was courageous for us to help. I never want to see her in that, that, like, my child is, he just turned ten months yesterday. He needs his mom. So, thankfully, she, she was out there. I kind of forced my hand to help. And the officer's completely right, there is no alpha in that house. And I entered and was just screaming. She was screaming in a stern voice, because we have a little dog. She's about, she's about this big. And, and we worked in a, in a psych ward. I worked there for nine years, she worked there for six years. So, our thing is either, there's a fight or flight response, and we don't, we don't fight. We usually go to help and respond to people who need, who need help and assistance. And I'm just very scared to death for my child. Even today, we had an instance, we heard something, and we got scared, thinking it was, again, the dogs. We, we are scared every day. She, she doesn't like to go outside in our backyard with our child, because they could come any second. And, and so that's why we're both here today for our son.
Thank you. Any questions for anybody?
I have one. Have you had any problems since Stormy's been gone?
We haven't seen them get out, or we haven't had any issues since. But I do want to say, in the video, that it was Diesel who, it looked like, was jumping up at the little girl as well. And it was Diesel who I had to kind of kick away from me, because Stormy was being held. So, they do both seem aggressive, and I do, really, I, I feel a lot of fear for my son. We just moved into the area as well. So, it's, it's scary. We have a lot of years in, in this home, and to raise our first child, and we want to enjoy that. And we're dog lovers, and we, we used to work in a psych facility, and they had therapy dogs there as well, working with the kids. And a therapy dog shouldn't be scary. So, we're, we're dog lovers, but I've never, I've never been scared of a dog before. I love big dogs, aggressive dog, the aggressive breeds of dogs. But it really just changed my, my thinking now with my son.
And like, I just wanted to add one last thing, like, well, we're, we're just concerned that... Sorry. It's okay. We're just concerned that the behavior and all the past actions of these dogs, and it just happens, happens over and over and over again. And it's like, what is it going to take for something to happen? And I understand that the Benson's just got a letter a week ago about the Dangerous Dog Act. But this happened on August third, that was about seventeen, twenty days ago. You know, like, you got to take some level of responsibility. She, and, and, yeah, so that's, that's all I got to say, I guess.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Robert, hold on, we have a question.
So, I'm assuming your backyard is not fenced?
No, sir, it's about seventy-five on the sides, but there's entry in the front and through the back.
What, so, there's obviously four dogs. What would you, what would be your recommendation to make you feel safe on your own property?
I mean, we have since talked about finishing the fencing, but that, we still would feel scared if those, at least those two dogs were there. At least, I know I would, I would be scared just knowing they're across the street, because who knows?
They're big dogs, and the, like, I'm telling you, when I seen her, she had the big, she had the child up like this, and they were jumping on her, and they're pretty tall. And honestly, if it happens again next week, I don't know if I'm going to run into it, because like, like, even if the officer's scared, I didn't even have shoes on. I had no shoes on, I went there barefoot, two, one forty-seven, ninety-five degree weather. My feet were burned for two days. Couldn't like really walk, they were burnt, wrestling with these guys.
So you, so you would, you would say then that no amount of fencing would be adequate to make you feel that you were, that you were safe on your own property?
I'm not a doctor, I'm not a psychologist, but like I said, I think the, the root of the concern is the, the owners of the dogs and the negligence that just happens on a daily basis. That's why a lot of people are here, because they're concerned about that. I'm sure they, I'm, I'm sure everybody's going through issues. That's why we got our dog, because it, I've, I've, it was during twenty-twenty. You know, everybody's cooped up inside, so we, we want, and we have so much love, and we have resources to, to feed a dog. But we understand, we're in the mindset that we got a rescue dog, but in reality, we're, we're raising the dog. We're not rescuing, we're not the owners, we're raising the dog. So, the main concern is, are these people raising the dog right?
You're not suggesting, right, that they put up a fence? You're asking what kind of fence they would feel comfortable with if the neighbor put up the fence?
Yeah, I don't, just for the public record, I ask a lot of questions, I'm not...
Oh, that's fine.
There's not meant to be assumptions about my questions. I live very close.
I just wanted to make sure that people understand, you're not asking them to put up a fence.
You're asking the owner to put up. I'm trying to ascertain...
That's fine.
Is there anything?
But there's like big trauma, so like, you know what I mean? Anytime we go outside, we're traumatized. Like, I'm going to go see a therapist, I got to go see, I got to do a bunch of things, so... And I, I don't know if my wife might see a therapist, because we love dogs. But we went to BJ's one day, and we seen a little, the littlest dog on a little carrier, and he growled, and I jumped up, like, literally, like, like, my hair stood up and everything, and...
It's become a quality of life issue.
And honestly, we noticed that not a lot of people walk down that street anymore. Like, we would see a thousand dogs go up and down now, and not a lot of people go up and down that street.
Okay.
I would, I would just like to add for the record, Mr. Chairman, I actually live very close. I walk down that street frequently, and I actually bike down that street every day. So obviously, I wasn't there for any of the events, I had no knowledge, I don't know you at all, but I think that should be in the record.
It will be, very good, that'll be part of the minutes. Kelly?
I would like...
Hold, Robert, I can go, I'll go back to you in a second.
Jennifer is a nurse, I just wanted to point that out, and she did treat initially Ms. Hansen's wound on her leg. And I just wanted to ask you, how, what did you, how would you evaluate the puncture wounds that were on her leg?
They were fairly, there was two fairly deep puncture wounds on her legs, on her leg, I'm sorry. Usually with the puncture, like, it doesn't, it stops bleeding with pressure, so it, it did when I applied the pressure, but they were pretty deep. And as soon as I had seen them, I said, "You really need to..." We didn't know that the police and the ambulance had been called at that time, so I was recommending to her that she really should go to the hospital. And she was really, like, in shock still, so, you know, she kept saying she felt like she was going to pass out from the pain, and so it was stressful.
One other thing, I think that you, did she say anything about any other parts of her body? Was anything else hurting?
She thought that they had bit her on her stomach and on her leg, but she was kind of just too in shock and just really emotional to really assess. And I didn't want to push her too much, because I'm not, I wasn't at work, so...
Sounds like you're great neighbors. Did you have something else, Robert? Are you all set?
No.
Tim, are you all set? Dennis?
I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think for the last person to come up, I would like, oh, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry.
You have to read this to me. Good evening.
Hi, my name's Anne Gerard. I moved in with my parents, they live right next door.
What address is it?
It's fifty-two, but there's no fifty.
Okay.
So, our back decks face each other, maybe fifty, sixty feet apart, the hedgerow. So I've seen the dogs a lot, and there's no control over them at all, okay, since they've moved in. They bark, they're aggressive acting. When they're not around, they bark pretty incessantly, which is a problem for me, because I work night shift. So I've had to move to another side of the house, just to get my sleep during the day when these dogs are by themselves. But my bigger concern is, I moved into the house because my parents, who have been living there for sixty-plus years, are eighty-one and seventy-nine, and can barely walk on their own. So I have very big concerns, and it's been a concern since they moved in. And it hasn't changed. It, actually, the barking's gotten less, and it, I didn't realize the other dog was still, you know, at the pound. I wasn't aware of that, but that makes sense, because they're much quieter. But they jet themselves all up into a frenzy, and you can tell, you know, they really, and it's been... I mean, nothing against them, really, but I'm concerned, you know, for the neighbors and stuff like that, because the dogs do not act well. They're not under control, and haven't been, and I see this every day, fifty feet away. Just saying.
I just have one quick question. Are the dogs outside when they're not home?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Barking, usually, except for now that he's not there anymore.
Is that it? Are we done, questions or...
So, do you have any other...
I have one other person to come up. It's Melissa Houston. Melissa is a...
Why, is she the dog trainer?
Yes.
All right, so let me read this first, and then Melissa, you can sit there, and then you can give us our information, okay? "We did receive a, some written correspondence from Gail Sanders. Gail lives at Fifty-One Walnut Street. I'd like to read this into the record. I am and have been a pet owner for many years, so regret voicing my opinion tonight, as our pets are truly members of our family. First, let me say, my neighbors across the street are fairly new to the neighborhood. When I saw them move in, I was a little apprehensive to go over, as I saw four dogs, two appearing to be pit bulls, uh, pit bulls, I'm sorry. Right away, with everything you hear, you do not want to make a judgment. I have seen the dogs once before getting out of the porch and running down the street. But on August thirty-first, I saw something I hope would never happen again."
August third.
August third, all right.
I saw.
Thank you very much. "I saw something I would never want to see again. My picture window was directly across from their house. A woman parked in front of the house, took a small girl out of a car seat, and immediately a pit bull came running out attacking them. The woman was screaming and holding up her little girl, so the dog would not bite her. I immediately called nine-one-one. When I got to my front door, I could hear sirens coming. I did observe the owner of the house pulling her vehicle out of the driveway, pulling it in the street, and got one of the dogs in her vehicle. Police cruisers, an ambulance, and Oxford Animal Control pulled up. They were all looking towards Forty-Nine Walnut Street, where the woman and the girl ran to. I observed police taking photos of a woman's vehicle and spot on the road that looked like blood. I watched as the little girl was put in the ambulance, and the woman was taken out of my other neighbor's home on a stretcher. I know the dogs have gotten loose once before, this makes twice. So when will be the third victim? One of my, one of my neighbors are a pet, or myself. I have never felt this way before, but when I go out of my home, I stop and look..." I have never felt this way before, but when I go out of my home, I stop and look around before I don't, hoping I don't see a loose pit bull. I hope this proves to the committee that this pit bull should not be at that home. I urge you to make a safe, make us as safe as it used to be. Thank you, Gail Sanders, fifty-one Walnut Street. So again, that has been officially uh, entered into the record and I will listen to what you have to say. Your name, please?
Melissa Houston, uh, I live at one thirty-three Charlton Street and I'm the owner and operator of, no, excuse me, Northeast School for Dogs. I've been in business for twenty-five years. I do basic obedience and I also specialize in aggressive dogs. Um, I watch the videos um, of the dogs and they're definite, it's clearly an alarming situation where um, the dog, I kind of wrote some things down just so I can keep myself straight here. Um, before I give any kind of findings or recommendations, I'd like to reference the ear, the Ian Dunbar Bite Scale by which dog bites are assessed. This scale takes out all emotion from the bite assessment and objectively places the bite on a scale from one to six. The scale helps to assess the aggressiveness of a biting dog. I don't know, do you guys have the, that form at all?
No.
Okay.
Uh, yes, it's included in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Oh, wait a minute. I had it in the recommendations.
Yeah, I don't, yeah. I know I didn't see that.
Why don't you, why don't you just tell us what that scale means?
Sure. Um, it's levels one to six and it grades the type of bite. Um, and a level four is one to four punctures from a single bite with at least one puncture deeper than half the length of the dog's canine teeth. A level five is multiple bite, a multiple bite incident with at least two level four bites or multiple attack incident with at least a one level four bite in each. Level six is the victim is dead. These, this was a level five where the dog, first of all, it was an unprovoked attack. The um, person was getting out of their car with their child, there was no, nobody was taunting the dogs or, or trespassing onto the deck or anything like that. The dog came out and um, without provocation, um, attacked the, the person and the child. Uh, the thing that's very concerning is when a bite is a bite and then a release and then a redirect and a bite again and then another bite, um, there's clear intent there to do a lot of harm. It's different than you put your hand down to pet a dog and the dog bites you in the hand, um, or jumps up and, and nips at you. This is a repeated bite, um, and the location of the bites are significant as well. It's considered that extremities are bites to, to maim and, and harm. Um, abdominal bites are to eviscerate, so when a dog jumps up and, and tries to bite either in your um, intestinal area, um, up at your neck, um, those are, are considered extremely serious. The dog is, is, you know, means business. Um, the um, watching the video, um, it was an unprovoked predatory attack on two innocent bystanders. There's no, there was no threat assessment, but just an immediate launch to attack. And it was the bite and release and then redirect bite again. The child, the, the woman and her child posed no threat. The first dog, uh, Stormy, is considered a very dangerous dog. And on that bite level scale, it says that the level fives and six, the dog is extremely dangerous. Uh, the dog is simply not safe around people and according to this scale, um, euthanasia is recommended for a dog that does this kind of thing. Um, I get phone calls all the time, every day I get a phone call, pretty much someone calling about an aggressive dog that they have, a dog has bitten someone. Most of the time, it's a, a single bite type thing. These type of calls, if someone called me and said that their dog did this kind of um, attack on someone, I wouldn't even touch that, I wouldn't even, um, I would recommend euthanasia for that, in that situation. Um, it's a serious attack, um, and it's for the, for the situation to just keep happening where the dog keeps, the dogs keep escaping, um, it's gonna get worse. What happened when you see the dog, all four dogs run in there, maybe the one dog had the serious intent, but what happens is there's this pack mentality and all the dogs get swept up into the excitement of the situation. The two dogs that really didn't do anything were kind of just milling around, they were excited, but they didn't go in for any kind of, in the video at least, it looks like their, their, their intent wasn't really to harm. They were kind of following along with the pack. The second dog, wh- when the neighbor takes the child away and then, and is trying to get out of there with the child and Diesel leaves the person who was injured and now redirects and starts to follow after the child, that's just, and then is leaping, you can see the dog leaping to try to get at the child. That's extremely concerning as well. That's a dog that's out of control and it's just a matter of how far was it gonna go? If the, you know, if the neighbors hadn't shown up, um, the, the woman with her child couldn't have fought off four dogs. It's, it's, and the, and the recommendation for a fence, that has to be a six-foot-high fence. It's, it's ridiculous to think that a four-foot fence is gonna contain, um, uh, bully-type dogs are very athletic. They can hop that, especially on that deck, that's even less, less than four feet, they can hop right over that. I have dogs on my property that, you know, all dogs are contained behind a six-foot-high fence um, because a dog can easily.
The chain link fence you use too, rather than?
Yes, absolutely.
Cuz they were looking at a wooden picket fence. Okay.
A wooden fence, um, it depends how you put it because if you put it facing inward, they can use the um,
Rails.
The rails to, you know, climb off of it. Um, but a six-foot fence um, around the entire property or around the entire house so that no door could be um, left open and a dog push its way out. The thing too is, um, in a situation like this where they say we're gonna keep the dog, you know, behind the fence and, and all that, um, that's a management situation and eventually management breaks down. A kid leaves a door, a, a door unlatch, somebody uh, comes to deliver a package and opens up a gate or, or whatever and um, and that's when somebody gets, you know, then the dogs are out again. And um, everybody that has a dog has a responsibility to keep everyone safe from, you know, from being harmed. And um, I just think that uh, the, the dog that did, um, Stormy, uh, that's not a dog that you're gonna rehabilitate to not get into that situation again. Dog might be fine with its family, but to just launch a, a unprovoked attack like that is, is terrifying.
How about Diesel? Is he the same category or?
Well, the, the thing, Diesel, I can't tell from the video, it's, you know, a question of did he, did he bite anybody? But he pursued and he was jumping, um, and that could have just been exciting, you know, excitement, but still, um, he knocked somebody to the ground, he had the, you know, down on the ground. Um, and dogs are incredibly fast. You can't react as, as fast as a dog can and you can be bitten, you know, i- in multiple bites before you know it. The, you know, training is a must for all dogs. Not one of those dogs had any control, nobody could, they couldn't call the dogs off. Even afterwards, the dogs were in the neighbor's yard, um, you know, and, and there was just no control. So um, I just think that the, you know, it's a terrible situation and knowing, I don't know if you saw in the news, a, a male carrier was just completely, um, you know, attacked and killed by a pack of four or five dogs at, at someone's house. That, you know, um, it's, it's horrific to be attacked. It's scary to be bitten once by a dog, um, that must have been terrifying. The, the neighbors that acted, I mean, they, um, I'm sure they just acted out of instinct to, you know, save the child and, and help the person, but it's terrifying.
Any questions for anybody?
I have one. Um, if, if the dog is spayed, do you think that would change the demeanor at all?
No. Not, I mean, not at this point. No, the dog has already, you know, gone and done multiple attacks. Re, uh, you know, when you get a chance, please read through that bite scale. Um, that person, the, the Dr. Dunbar is um, a renowned, you know, expert on, on this kind of thing. Um, so no, spaying the, this is a what was mentioned by the, you know, the um, police chief, I believe, um, you know, dogs have to be trained, there has to be rules, boundaries, limitations, someone has to be, you know, the, the humans in the house have to be under control, um, and ha- have to have control of the dogs and these four dogs are not in control at all. I wouldn't give a, a second chance to the, actually, I mean, this is already, the dogs already had two incidents of bites. It's far too severe what the dog did, spaying it isn't gonna do anything.
Thank you.
Anything?
Go ahead, Robert. Through the chair. Uh, so the Benways, I believe, actually have a child in the house.
Mm-hmm.
And um, I don't, I mean, they'll have another opportunity to come up and speak. I don't recall us ever having any accusation that the dog was a danger at home. So why is it not possible that this dog couldn't be in another location away from a densely populated area where there's a lot of people, like on a farm, for example?
That the, um, the, the mythical farm that the dog can go, you know, there's, there isn't a safe, for a dog that's got done this kind of bite, are we talking about Stormy or are we talk, which dog are you talking about?
Yes, Stormy.
Stormy. Um, that's just moving a dangerous dog to a different area. What's gonna stop, you know, um, someone walking onto that farm and getting attacked as well? You know, it, we're dealing with an animal and they're going to behave, you know, with instincts and, and when a dog has already bitten, they, this dog has no bite inhibition, it wasn't able to assess, this person is not any kind of threat. It just came out and attacked. So moving it to a farm is just moving a problem, a dangerous dog around to somewhere else. I'm, I am a dog lover, I love dogs, that's why I do what I do, but I will always go with human safety first. And moving it to a farm is just, you know, moving, it's like relocating someone, you know, who uh, attacks people, you know, murders people, just moving them somewhere else, it's not gonna help.
So through the chair, um, could you account for why the Benways haven't experienced bites from the dog? If the dog is fundamentally a murderous dog, why wouldn't had have, why wouldn't they have had issues in their own home with the dog?
Because the dog is, is used to them, so this dog has, you know, it's, it's um, the family dog. I, I don't doubt that this dog is probably wonderful with the family. It probably is, is perfectly fine with the family, it's probably great with the, with the child in the house too. I wouldn't doubt that. But having a, a stranger, you know, a, a stranger come on the property, a dog, you know, someone that they're not familiar with, you know, is a, is a different story. And this dog acted like a predator and these people were prey for no reason. That doesn't mean that the dog is necessarily gonna flip a switch and maul the family, um, but the dog is not safe around the public, you know?
So people do have, not through the chair, people do have guard dogs
that they, that are on their own property that would presumably be aggressive towards strangers
and you don't feel that this dog in another environment, you know, where it was like most guard dogs, not able to escape, maybe with a different owner, you still don't feel that that would be adequate?
You would have to have the perfect situation, possibly have the dog go live with a trainer, um, someone who is experienced in this kind of handling, in a place that the dog could never escape from, and again, like I mentioned, management can always break down, somebody can leave a gate open or whatever. There isn't when a dog exhibits this kind of behavior, common sense says there's no need for that dog to be around anymore. Just, that's safety. Again, human life comes before, you know, the dog. It, it's, that's just, you know, the, like the police, the police said, you know, it's their job to protect the community and this dog is, is a danger to the community. You could, you know, sh- ship it off to some, the, the problem is, and I get this phone call all the time, can you help me find somebody that I can rehome the dog to? No, I can't because number one, I don't want that on me, that responsibility on me. And, and who do you think is gonna take this dog that is going to be educated enough to handle the dog properly and keep it safe from other people? Yes, some dogs, a- again, looking at this scale, dogs that bite on level one, two, three, and even sometimes on four, um, can be rehabilitated. A dog that's mauled somebody, and that's what this, a mauling is repeated bites, you know, moving and biting another part of the body. A dog that's mau- mauled somebody is not a dog that I would want to, you know, even consider like trying to re- rehabilitate. There are thousands, hundreds of thousands of safe dogs out there that need homes and unfortunately, you do get, you know, handfuls of dogs that are in this situation and it just isn't, it just doesn't make sense to me to, to um, take that risk again, you know?
But Diesel isn't a different, so if Stormy's a level five, what would Diesel be?
If Diesel didn't make contact and bite, um, he, you know, was still, um, they do have a level, says level one, obnoxious or aggressive behavior but no skin contact by teeth. So that's.
That would be the other two dogs probably, right? Nuts and stocks?
Yeah. Um, and, and technically, if Diesel didn't bite anybody, um, yeah, because it says level two, skin ta- contact by teeth but no skin puncture. There may be nicks, slight be, um, bleeding caused by lateral movement. So if, you know, if I wasn't there, I don't know if Diesel bit anybody, he was jumping aggressively trying to get at that child, what would he have done if he, you know, what was his intent? I don't know. He certainly is a um, unruly dog. He um, absolutely needs training, um, and he needs intensive training, expensive training, um, you know, all those things, time needs to be put in. And then it continues for the life of the dog when he goes, you know, into, into a home uh, or whatever, back to his home or into a new home. He's been in with, like, as I mentioned before, the alpha dog. Now that the alpha dog has left, um, the dog that kind of started it all, he may be, you know, he may be a lot calmer. Um, or he might, you know, next time somebody's walking by the house, he might go flying out again.
So in your opinion, if, I'm just throwing this out, if, if, so let's say we have Stormy removed from the premise, whatever way, on a farm, if, if, if Diesel was there, are we putting the public at risk, do you think?
If he gets out again. It's hard.
If he had to go to training and, you know, we got a more secure fencing and some other. But if he said he had to go to training and, you know, we've got a more secure fencing and some other recommendations, is there any hope for Diesel? That's what I'm asking. But it doesn't seem to be much hope for the other one.
Yeah, there could be hope for him in the right environment. If it's gonna go back to, if he's gonna go, you know, if it's gonna go back to a home where he seems to get out repeatedly, you know, and offenses...
Would he be a candidate for what Robert said, a farm?
Well, he hasn't been removed from the home, so let's just...
But I'm just, I'm thinking along the road.
I know, but they haven't, we haven't had a lot of issues since Stormy's been removed.
Right, but that's why I'm asking the question.
August 3rd.
Right.
So, almost a month out of that time period, and it appears, at least, from what I'm hearing, that the dogs have not gotten out and they're being a little bit quieter.
Yep. And that's the other part of this that, from what the people that have come up, the neighbors that have, you know, testified and whatever, sounded like there was a lot of chaos. And when there's chaos, a dog is more likely to act aggressively. So, if, and chaos can be started by just a dog that constantly barks. Barking gets under your skin after a while and it raises the excitement level. So, if there's one dog in the house that is sort of the ringleader and is constantly barking and alerting just when someone walks by, it gets all the other dogs amped up. And if you remove that one dog from the situation, the level of excitement in the house can come way down. And so, that can, through training and teaching all the dogs, and that's what, you know, one of the things that I do from the very get-go when I train any dog, is teach the owners how to teach the dogs to be calm. That they don't have to alert at every sound, that they don't need to bounce off the window when someone walks by. And if we can get the level in the house to come down, then possibly, you know, the dogs aren't going to act so aggressively. But due to the history, a six-foot-high chain link would be the minimum that everybody needs to be, or, I don't know, you know, stockade if you turned it the right way. But, and that would also probably help for a visual barrier. So, the dogs can't see out and get amped up when somebody goes by. But, you know, when you have that one dog that's whipping everybody into a frenzy, and that's what that was, that was a frenzy. That was a, that was, you know, and we refer to the dogs that participated but didn't really do anything. Those are the sharks that are circling, that keep circling, and every now and then a shark might go in and take a, you know, take a bite. It appears that the two other dogs didn't do that, but Diesel continued to jump at the, you know, at the child. That's extremely concerning. And they entered the house, you know, the neighbor's house, you know, that, that's extremely concerning. So, you know, relocating the dogs to a place where things are quieter, you know, sure, that's a solution as well. But I just think that when a dog, and again, please read through the bite scale and, you know, understand what they're saying here. When a dog is, does that kind of bite, bite redirect, go again, go again for no reason, that's a really dangerous dog.
Any other, yes, Rob?
No, this is more just, more for the public's benefit. You know, people need to understand that we were just informed about this incident at the beginning of August. And didn't seem any rush from town staff to have this hearing any sooner. I had to push to have this hearing today, it would have been another week. So, people need to understand that. We're hearing about testimony that there's been all of these calls all the time. And so, that's why we have a lot of questions, because this has been going on and we haven't been told about it. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
But we're going through the process now because there was an incident. I mean, you know, and that's part of the process, that this was not the only, this is really the first time that someone really got bit. And I do understand the timeframe and stuff, and it's good that we moved it up. But the whole point is to find out that we have a dangerous dog and what we're going to do with it. And the other two dogs are they nuisance dogs? And that's why we're here tonight, we're going through the process. We've got some good testimony from people. I will give the applicant, I'm not the applicant, the dog owner, in a minute, an opportunity to come up and, you know, make his or her point. But before I do that...
I do, yeah, I have one more question. Is it possible that the dogs were still acting, now I'm not excusing Stormy's behavior, taking Stormy out of the situation? They had just moved into a new house. So, that probably didn't help in the whole entire situation. Now that you have Stormy gone and they are kind of a little bit more acclimated to where their new home is...
Yep.
We might not see as much of an issue with Diesel?
I don't think that the house itself, being in a new house itself, is really that much of a factor. I mean, a well-trained dog can be bounced from, you know, environment to environment and not have this kind of situation. I think the root of it more was, you know, sort of the chaotic and lack of boundaries and control.
Right.
Where there was the one, one sort of ringleader, you might say, that kind of got everybody whipped up into a frenzy. If that dog was not in the situation to begin with, that whole scenario probably wouldn't even have happened. You know, it's very hard to say, to predict what would, you know, would this happen again if Stormy's not there? I don't know. It all depends on, you know, the rules and boundaries that they put on these dogs and they work on control and teaching, you know, that's part of your responsibility as a dog owner. Not, it's not just to give love and receive love from the dog, it's to provide direction and control so that, you know, the dog is safe. With Diesel, I don't know, I don't know how Diesel behaves. If somebody walks by his house, does he bark when people go by? Is it, what kind of bark? Is it a, hey, there's somebody going by bark? Or is it, I'm going to kill that person that's going by type of bark? It's, I don't know those, you know, questions.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
If the, thank you very, yes, Dennis, I'm sorry.
I got, just kind of on one of the things Robert brought up, is they do have a child. But I've been around dogs all my life and, I mean, we have one now. If you approach the dog, grab its tail sometimes, which a child could do, or startles the dog or whatever, that dog reacts right away. And that could be an aggressive manner for a dog similar to this. Am I correct in that thinking or...
Which dog are we talking about?
Stormy.
Okay.
Stormy, you know, just because they have a child that they haven't had an issue with. I, I just think back with, with dogs I have had, I know, we've had a lot of dogs. And even as one of us members of the household, if you cause that dog to react quickly because they weren't expecting you, they can easily turn around and either snip or, you know...
Yep.
So, it's something that even they should be aware that this could happen to their child.
It could. Some dogs that are, you know, terrible with strangers in their house or whatever, appear to never do any harm to the children in the house. But then there's other times where, you know, all of a sudden, the dog, you know, the dog does and maules the child. I, you know, I don't want to go speculate on any of that and say, you know, that's the reason the dog should be removed. It's more the public's, you know?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, I would like, if there's no one else, Kelly?
No.
I would like the dog owner to come up and if they've got something else they'd like to say.
I think she's in the restroom.
Oh. Okay, we'll wait. Ma'am, you can come up. Sure. You can give your rebuttal here.
Oh, I just had, like, the date was wrong. I was, we weren't in the house on April 30th, so we didn't live, we moved in Oxford, when was it?
May 25th.
May 25th. So, that date was wrong and I don't know what she was talking about, that date. What else?
Any other response to anything else you've heard tonight?
And another thing was that I did push the dogs out into the backyard and when we were in that, I don't know, it wasn't Mario Cabrera. He was going in with his wife and my cousin Amanda and the other girl, the other little girl, but...
All right. If you want to have anything else, we're all set.
That's it.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, would you be willing to allow us to ask some follow-up questions?
Go ahead. Who are you going to ask them to these times?
Yes, yes.
Go ahead, sure.
Mr. Benway, you know, you gave us documentation that this is an emotional support animal. I don't know how, just to ask this appropriately, but have you considered other types of animals from your emotional support?
He can't hear you. He wants you to speak louder.
I'm sorry, have you, have you considered other animals as emotional support animals?
He can't hear me, what you're saying.
He's asking if you've thought about any other animals as another emotional support dog. No.
And, Mr. Benway, is it accurate, you've had this dog for how long? Could you restate that?
She'll be...
October 30th, this year, she'll be three.
She'll be three in October.
So, you've had her since she was born?
I've had her, yeah. She was born in the house.
We have three children, too. I don't know if you guys thought I only had one, but the dogs have never bit our children. And my mother has come over and I've had people come over and Stormy's been fine.
Mr. Chair, through you, to the Benways, do you have any explanation for why these incidents occurred here in Oxford?
As far as, I think she got nervous and protective when Allison came in and opened the gate and walked onto our gate. So, that, I don't, I think that's why. The other incident, I think there was just a lot of commotion and the kids screaming in the front yard and being playful. And then they just popped the gate and ran out.
Mr. Chair, through you, there was, the kids were playing prior to the incident?
Amanda's daughters, one was in the car and one was out. And they were all excited and my daughter Ava took April inside. And I think the dogs heard April and my daughter Ava playing in the house, so they got all excited and stuff. And then they wanted to come out because they were in the backyard. And they ran in the front. That's the only thing I can think of.
Okay, if there's no other questions, we're all set.
Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry, Tim, go ahead.
Thank you. How are the dogs getting out when you're not home? Somebody had stated earlier that when you're not home, the dogs have gotten out before.
I think they said they were barking.
They said they're in the yard.
They're outside the yard barking.
Yeah, they're just barking.
Okay, so they're inside the house?
Yes, they're gaining in.
I was under the impression that they were coming through that same door and being on that deck.
I don't even leave them in the backyard, I leave them in the house. I don't let them...
Guys all set?
I am.
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, we're all set, thank you. Does the board want to take a minute to think things over a little bit before we have our discussion, before I close the public hearing?
Close the evidentiary portion of the public hearing.
Okay.
And then, and then have the ACO make her recommendation and then the board can deliberate.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion that we close the public hearing, right?
Evidentiary portion, evidentiary.
All right, I'm going to look for a motion to end the public hearing, please.
I make a motion that we end the, we close the evidentiary portion of the public hearing.
Second. Okay.
I know what you're saying.
Can we have discussion?
Yep.
I think Dee was trying to say that perhaps we should take the recommendation from the ACO prior to closing the public hearing.
No.
No.
She's saying that we need to determine which dogs are which before we get the recommendation from the ACO. So, we need to close the hearing, then we need to have a discussion amongst ourselves and label the dogs as dangerous or...
Nuisance.
Nuisance, thank you. And then Kelly will give us her recommendation. So, I've made a motion, you second it.
So, I will call for the...
Yes.
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 Oh, well, yes, public hearing is closed. All right.
So, now we might, now we can take a minute?
Well, does anybody need time to review their...
Does anybody need any time to look through the packet here before we listen to Kelly's recommendation? If you'd like to take some time, are you all set, Tim, Robert? All right, so we're all set with...
I haven't seen Kelly's recommendation. Dee? But does she recommend what, whether the board deem them dangerous or nuisance or no? Just if they determine? Okay. If, so then the board should vote on each animal and name each animal? And for the two dogs that were complained of as being dangerous, the options are to declare them dangerous, nuisance, or to dismiss the complaint. For the two dogs that were complained of as being nuisance, the board can deem them nuisance dogs or dismiss the complaint. And when the board is making their determinations, you should say the reason why you are finding the dog either dangerous, nuisance, or dismissing. So, you should cite the reasons for your findings.
Do we do this after the recommendations?
No, the recommendations are, once you...
So, we're going to declare right now whether they're dangerous or nuisance?
Yes, and then, once they're declared dangerous or nuisance, if the dog is deemed dangerous, the statute states that you must do at least one of the remedies that are outlined. If the dog is deemed a nuisance, the board has discretion of whether or not to have any remedy. And I believe the recommendations are just surrounding what the remedies would be, is what I'm hearing.
Well, my first recommendation has to be whether I recommend that the dog be dangerous or nuisance, correct? And then I give, after you determine that, I believe, then I recommend what I think...
So, we need to hear from you next as to whether or not each individual dog is dangerous or nuisance?
Yes.
So, that's what we'd like to hear. So, I guess the first one we're going to talk about is, let's talk about Stormy. Do you think he's a dangerous dog or is he a nuisance dog?
I believe that Stormy should be deemed a dangerous dog, based on the credible evidence presented at this hearing. Stormy exhibited extremely dangerous behavior by biting multiple times, in biting the abdominal area of Ms. Hanson. Bites to the abdomen indicate a disemboweling bite, which is extremely alarming behavior. Stormy's bite history indicates that she is a level-five biter, based on Dr. Ian Dunbar Dog Bite Scale. According to the scale, the dog, if it's a level-five, the dog is an extremely dangerous, is extremely dangerous and mutilates. The dog is simply not safe around people. I recommend euthanasia because the quality of life is so poor for the dogs to live out their lives in solitary confinement. I have enclosed a copy of Dr. Ian Dunbar's Bite Scale.
Okay. Thank you. Next one is Diesel.
I make a recommendation that Diesel be deemed a dangerous dog, based on the credible evidence presented at this hearing. Although there is no proof that Diesel has actually bitten anyone yet, he has exhibited unprovoked aggressive behavior towards people. And I'd like you to keep in mind that the definition of a dangerous dog in Master of Law, Chapter 140, Section 136, is as follows. A dog that either, one, without justification, attacks a person or domestic animal, causing physical injury or death. Or, two, behaves in a manner that a reasonable person would believe poses an unjustified threat of physical injury or death to a person or to a domestic or owned animal. So, they don't necessarily have to bite someone in order to be deemed a dangerous dog. So, they don't necessarily have to bite someone in order to be deemed a dangerous dog.
I'm sorry, can I ask a question real quick? Just on that, just for clarification?
Go ahead, Tim.
So, um, for the, for Diesel, when you deemed it dangerous, there's the categories below it that you have to pick one of them? Is that just for us or is that for her recommendation? Okay.
Well, the ACO can, yeah, the ACO can make recommendations as to what should happen if the dog is deemed dangerous. So, I believe that's what she's done. Um, and you do, if the dog is deemed dangerous, you must pick at least one.
We can do several, Tim.
Right, right.
But there's no euthanasia with Diesel. That's not your recommendation?
No.
All right. Uh, next one, let's talk about Harley and we've got him as a nuisance dog. What's your...
So, my recommendation is that Harley be deemed a nuisance dog based on the credible evidence presented at this hearing. Just, that's all I put for...
That was good.
And basically, the same thing with Cash. Um, they were just kind of milling around. They didn't... It wasn't immediate.
You need extra?
Yeah.
This one's top, uh, top one's Cash, other one's Harley.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. All right, I can ask the board to review this, right? Take a minute?
Yeah, folks want to...
Do you guys want to take a minute to review this and see what our options are?
What about Cash? We didn't...
We already...
Oh, you already did it and I missed it?
So, we just went through paperwork.
It was very quick.
I need to take a minute anyway.
All right, let's take a minute, kind of review what our options are.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if, um, if the assistant manager has the documentation for us to review again of the statute, do you have that available or no?
I can print it out if you want to.
I'd appreciate that. Could we, could we maybe have...
Want to take a recess?
Yes.
All right, we'll take a five-minute recess.
I believe so, but I do have one over here.
Mr. Chairman, could it be 15 minutes so that the assistant manager has time to get that?
Did you go 140, 157?
Well, you gotta, you gotta hurry up.
I have that in front of me.
Yeah.
It's in the packet.
Fifteen-minute recess.
It should be in the packet.
Okay, it being 9:45, we'll continue our public, uh, public hearing here. Uh, what I'd like to do first, why don't we take the two nuisance dogs and can have a discussion about Cash? Uh, we have in front of us a recommendation that the Animal Control Officer suggested that we do, uh, that we deem Cash a nuisance dog and some of the contingencies that we put in there. So, I guess I'd like to start a discussion with the board to see where everybody's at regarding Cash and declaring, uh, that dog as a nuisance dog. So, Amy, do you have anything?
I feel like Cash is probably just a nuisance dog.
Okay, how do you feel about the, um...
I feel the same for Harley.
The conditions, the, the conditions that the Animal Control Officer put in, units one, two, three, and four? That, uh, maybe I should read them for the records so the public knows, okay? There are four conditions, uh, for Cash, uh, if we, if we decide to declare the dog a nuisance dog with the following conditions. We ought to that Cash be humanely restrained with a leash when he is removed from the residence of the owner. That's number one. Uh, that the dog be contained in a secure enclosure constructed with a chain link or other secure material with all four sides enclosed. The minimum height of the fence shall be adequate to successfully confine the dog. In the case of Benway's property, this should, would restrict the dog to the backyard fenced-in area, not the deck. Number three, we ought to that the dog owner or keeper of the dog provide to the licensing authority or Animal Control Officer or other entity identified in order information by which a dog may be identified throughout its life, including but not limited to photographs, videos, veterinary examination, tattooing or microchipping implantations, uh, or a combination of any such methods of identification. In the case of Cash, I would recommend a microchip implant in the same photo, some's photo. And the last thing that the board require the Benways to complete all orders within 30 days of the hearing. So, those are the conditions that Kelly, uh, would recommend. So, um, what does the board think of that? What, what, what's the opinion of the board? So, what do you think? Amy?
Um...
Do you agree with these?
Yeah, but once you deem a dog nuisance, if their behavior, if you get training and their behavior becomes better, can you then come back and say, okay, they, once they're a nuisance, they're a nuisance forever?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement that the, the dogs cannot be on that deck. That deck is too low and too close to the street. So, unless you're gonna put a fence in front of that that is, I would prefer stockade so they can't see out without those slats in between, so, and six to eight feet high so that they are completely enclosed into the backyard would be my, my prefer, preference.
Okay, how about putting, um, a leash on the dog when he leaves the property? You're okay with that?
Yeah.
Uh, how about putting a microchip in the dog?
Yeah, that's fine.
And you're okay with doing this within 30 days?
Yeah, probably, yeah, because they would give us updates if they couldn't get the fence installed in that amount of time, so...
Kelly, the, the, if they keep the dog in the backyard, is that already fenced in? Is that fence sufficient?
That fence, I believe, is sufficient for these two dogs.
That's, that's my question. We're talking about this one. So, they wouldn't have to go get additional fence for this dog?
Not for this dog.
As long as they kept them in the backyard?
Not for this dog, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so they've already met that qualification if they do it.
Mm-hmm.
Are you all for it?
I am all for it, thank you.
Dennis?
I'm all for it.
Robert?
Um, I'm just considering this. I, I have no doubt that the, you know, the, the, the presence of these dogs of the property is a nuisance and therefore the dogs are a nuisance because they keep getting out. And they, you know, they've gotten out as a group. So, I, you know, this dog, to that extent, you know, in my, in my judgment is a nuisance. As far as the conditions, um, I, I don't really love ambiguity. So, I, Amy kind of specified a height and I think that that's probably, if we're gonna say that the existing fence is adequate, you know, I don't know if I'm comfortable with that. I kind of feel like there should be a double fence. Um, in general, maybe we can address that with the other animals because they don't all have to have the same requirements. So, for this animal, I would say that these conditions, I'm fine with these conditions.
Thank you. Tim?
I would agree. I mean, most of the stuff in this, um, you know, outside of photos and stuff that's already had, I mean, putting the dog on a leash is, is pretty standard for everybody. So, um, I mean, it's just, it's just in writing at this point. So, I don't, I don't think it's anything that's out of bounds for sure.
Okay, and I agree with everybody else. My only question is the fence in the back. Is it six feet high? Because I think Robert wants to have a height, so what?
So, the fence in the back is not six feet high. It's four feet high. Um, it's a pretty solid, sturdy fence. It's chain link on several sections of it. They did put padlocks in all, there's three chain link gates out in the backyard. They put padlock, um, padlocks on all three of those. And then the back wall is that solid wooden fence, which the regular part of the fence is six feet high and then somebody, I don't know if it was already there before they got there, but they added even more onto the top for some of that fence. So, it's like, I don't know, eight feet high there.
So, the minimum fence is four feet and you feel that that's sufficient?
I feel that's sufficient for a nuisance dog.
Boy, okay with that?
And Cash is a, is a short dog as well.
This, this, Mr. Chairman, this particular dog is the small one?
Yep. So, are you guys all okay with a minimum of four-foot-high fence, which is existing?
For this dog, I think.
For this dog.
Well, that's right, that's what we're talking about.
So, the only other thing I would ask is that you make sure that on the bottom of the, I know they chained the top, but just make sure that the dogs can't push out the bottom.
Mm-hmm.
I trust that you know how to make sure that... I know my dog goes and pushes the bottom of the fence and that's how he gets out, yeah.
Do we want to specify that, Amy, to just say that the ACO should verify that the fence goes beneath the ground?
I, I don't think the fence needs to go beneath the ground.
Securely to the ground, something?
It's not, it's so when you have the gate, the latch is normally at the top, so your bottom is able to push...
They can push the bottom of the gate.
Yeah.
If it's a gate, they can push it out like that.
No. If you know chain link fence, the...
I don't.
You are, no, I'll tell you, they are not gonna push the bottom of that fence.
Yeah, that, I don't think they can push the bottom of that fence.
It's gonna have to get unlatched.
It's a, it's a solid chain link fence. It's not like a wimpy chain.
Yeah, because in my stockade, they can push out...
Well, that's, that's a wooden, that's a wooden fence. It's wholly different. Chain link?
Thank you for clearing my floor.
Well, I just wanna, I wanna be fair to the homeowner, you know, in this case, so...
All right, so here's what, we're looking to, uh, a motion to deem Cash as a nuisance dog based on the fact that he participated, he's gotten loose several times and he participated in a, an aggressive, he was part of an aggressive group of dogs that, that attacked, uh, a couple of individuals. That's my reason for declaring that dog a nuisance dog with the following conditions. That he be humanely, um, restrained with a leash when they leave the presidents, uh, presidents, that there is a secure, they're within a secure enclosure with a minimum of four-feet-high fence and all gates to have a padlock on them and that the owner, um, put a microchip implant, uh, in the dog to make sure we can keep track of where he is. So, that is what I'm looking for is a motion.
I will make that motion.
I'll second that for discussion.
Okay, I will open it up for discussion.
So, we're not requiring this be done in 30 days?
And I require that it be done within 30 days.
I will amend the motion.
You second that?
Is the restriction from the, um, from the deck area was not in that motion.
We're not, oh, that the dog can't go on the deck area. I'm gonna add that. That's another amendment. Okay, that the dog will not be allowed to go in the deck area because of...
Well, they have to go on the deck area in order to get in the backyard.
That was gonna be my question.
But they can't be, they shouldn't be, um, just released onto the deck area.
At a leash.
Hold on, go ahead, Robert.
My impression was that on the right side of the house, there was a, that's where the black chain link fence is.
There, there is a black chain link fence on the right side of the house. If you're looking at the house, it comes off the house and then goes back, but there's no door out.
So, the chained thing that we saw, the chained gate is not on that side of the house?
In order for them to get to the backyard, they have to come out that side door off the deck.
Well, that's why I'm asking because it was depicted in photos that there was a black chain link fence gate.
Once they get into the backyard, but to get to the backyard, they have to come out that...
Or they would have to come out the front door where there's no fence at all.
Oh, is there no, there's no back door in the house?
No, there's no back door in the house, yeah.
So, they have to go the deck all the way through.
So, the thing is they can pass through the deck, but they can't stay on the deck. When they're outside, they have to be in the backyard, which is fully fenced in.
Yes.
By a minimum of a four-foot-high fence. That make sense?
So, the dog cannot be allowed on the deck without a leash?
Oh, that was...
Or the dog, what, what...
Because it's not four feet high on the fence there, so you're...
So, when they want to let the dog in the backyard, they gotta put the dog on a leash and then put him in the backyard?
I think we should say that, yes.
Okay. So, the dog will have to be leashed while he's on the deck. Putting the dog from the house to the backyard, the dog needs to be leashed.
Yeah.
And once he's in the backyard, he can go and have a good time for himself.
Now, I have another question. Is there a gate that you can close coming off that deck or walk a gate?
Yes, there is. And I can, I don't know if I can pull it up again, but, so, there is a wooden fence from the gate, from, I'm sorry, from the deck into the yard and then the rest of the yard...
Yeah, I just couldn't remember if there was another gate like that on the other side. Okay, yep.
So, here it is, right here, yep. So, if you look, this like two steps down, so I didn't actually measure it from the ground up to the top of the, um, fence, the wooden fence, but I would estimate from the two steps going down, that adds another foot.
Right.
Um, I, you know...
Steps are seven inches. All right.
So, that should be four, you know, four feet there as well, even though it's a wooden fence and not a, the chain link fence.
Can they get be, can they get between that bottom rail?
I don't think so.
And, no.
Even, even the, um, French Bulldog, even though he's short, they're pretty sturdy, yeah.
All right, so that's the motion. Clear as mud? I'll call the vote.
Wait a minute. So, that's part of the fenced-in area, what we're looking at in the backyard.
Mm-hmm.
So, and that gate's closed and he's gonna put supposedly hinges on that that'll automatically close that gate? Self-closing hinges, okay. All right, thank you.
All right, so we'll call for the vote. Amy?
Yes.
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 I'll vote yes, so let the record show in terms of Cash, he's a nuisance dog and, uh, the owners will be allowed to keep that dog based on the conditions that we put in. Well, Harley should be a little easier. Harley's another nuisance dog. Um, how does the board feel about putting the same conditions on Harley that we did with Cash? Amy?
I, I'm good with that.
Me too. Robert?
Um, I would say it's a physically larger dog and, um, you know, so they're not necessarily gonna have all these dogs throughout their lives. So, you know, I wouldn't want to, in the case of Cash, have more restrictions when it's a smaller, physically a smaller dog. This is a larger dog and, um, that fence there is, um, you know, I don't know if that's really adequate. The owner had talked about that he's already making arrangements to put another fence in the front past that. That was my understanding, if that's true. Um, and so, I think that, um, we need that new installed fence at a minimum to, we need to specify what, what height we're comfortable with for a larger dog, that it's not, if it was to get past this gate, that it's not gonna then get past the next gate and the next fence. That's my, my personal opinion.
Kelly, do you think the four-foot fence would be high enough for Harley?
I do. I will say too, um, I don't want to jump ahead to the next dog, but if the next dog is deemed a dangerous dog, the fencing would be a lot more requirements than what we're doing for these...
Let's just, we'll just focus on Harley right now.
We're just doing one dog at a time. What's required for this dog?
So, what you're saying is that the fence for Harley, the existing fence in the backyard would work, in your opinion?
In my opinion, yes, it would work.
All right. Anything else, Robert?
I don't have anything else to add.
Yeah? All right, so I'm gonna look for a motion that we reckon, that we call Harley a nuisance dog for the reason that he was part of a group of dogs that were involved in attacking, uh, two individuals. I recommend that the dog be restrained with a leash when they leave the, uh, property, that the, uh, there is a secure enclosure in the backyard, um, at least with a minimum fence of four feet high, that the dog be on a leash when he goes from the, uh, house through the deck to the backyard and, uh, all, that all, uh, gates have padlocks on them and self-closing hinges and that the dog be, have a microchip implant and that all this be done within 30 days.
And it be on a leash when you take it on the deck to the backyard?
He said it.
Oh, he said that?
He had it again, man. I'm sorry. He didn't.
Well, sometimes I don't speak well, so that's okay. Better be safe, better be safe. So, that's, that's what I'm looking for a motion for.
I would make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
I'll call for the vote. Amy?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer an amendment to the motion.
Sure.
Um, I'd like to amend the motion to, um, require that the owner installed the, as discussed, additional chain link fence at a minimum height of four foot extending from the front door walkway to the, um, fence on the western side, southern side of the property.
We can have a discussion on that.
I don't believe it was gonna be...
Is there a second for the motion?
Well, let's, let's, we're discussing, we're discussing the second motion you brought up that you wanna...
Yes, amendment.
Have an amendment, so let's just talk about the amendment.
Well, I think I need a second for the amendment. Does anybody second?
A second.
Go ahead. All right, so we have, we have an amendment, we have a second. Let's discuss it. Is, is the, and, first of all, it wasn't a chain link fence, the fence in the front. It was a white picket fence, if I'm not mistaken.
It was only on the deck.
No, it was, it was a wooden picket fence in the front of the house.
Right, okay, yeah.
The owner talked about adding an additional fence and I wanna make adding that fence a requirement.
And it was, it was, it was the wooden fence that you showed us, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, do we feel that that's necessary? I guess that's the discussion we need to have right now.
I, I guess I have a question on that. Why, why would, why would we have, why would they have to put new fencing in the... have to put new fencing in the, oh, you're saying transferring the current?
Additional fence.
No, an additional fence, and the reason is because the dogs have escaped repeatedly. We now have established history that people may or may not decide to use that gate, and so if the dogs get out, it's just an extra layer that, okay, so they get out, and maybe they get out of the deck portion in transit or something, but then even if they got out of that, there's still another fence they're not getting off the property.
So you're saying to basically add a fence around the pool fence structure?
In the front.
In the front, where he had stated, what he was going to say.
You pull up the picture in the front of the house. I'm sorry, thank you.
The owner had stated that he was, he was already looking into this, and I just want to make it a requirement for this animal.
So, okay.
With the front of the house.
He gave us a picture. I don't...
I didn't see it, but the other thing is, there's certain laws that we have to follow according to the state, and for instance, if a dog is deemed a dangerous dog and they want to turn the dog out somewhere, the fence has to be either two feet in the ground all the way around, or they have to have a special pen which has a floor, the fencing, and a roof on it. I don't want to order them to do one kind of fence for one dog and another kind of a fence for another dog, so that's where it gets complicated in this particular case.
Mr. Chairman, could I respond to the ACO's concern?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, through you to the ACO. I understand your concern, and obviously, whatever restrictions for the dangerous dogs are going to be the most appropriate, and that'll probably be what they'll have to do. They're not required to keep their dogs, and I wouldn't want to create a requirement for one that's over-restrictive, and so I'm just, we're looking at these as individual dogs, and so obviously, whatever investment they have to make for the most restrictive one is what they're going to do, and that would meet this requirement. So if I need to amend my motion, Mr. Chairman, to say or greater than, so that way it's...
Let's discuss with the board whether we need, whether they need to put an additional fence, and that's what you're asking for. You're asking us, we're being asked to put an additional fence in front of the house, all right?
So...
And I don't, as, well, what do you guys think?
Yeah, I'm trying to, so you want a fence in front of the...
Deck fence.
Current deck fence there. Well, it's deck railing, I guess, right? Is that a technical construction? That's the railing on the deck.
Right.
It's not really a fence.
See the grass area? That's the front yard. He wants us to put an additional fence, right, Robert, in the front yard in that section?
The owner had discussed it, and I just wanted to make it a requirement so that it actually happens.
Going to start on the side of the...
Right, and come down.
And come out and...
Come in.
The opening to the walkway and the gates going to be ready.
Okay.
So how would people get to your front door?
They got to open the gate.
Well, let's see, that's the problem.
Right.
The dog's on the other side of the gate.
Well, there's another gate in between them, so there's two gates.
No, because he's going to stop it by the flower. He's not coming all the way to the edge of the, not by what he just said. He said he's stopping at the flower, going back to the deck, so you got the gate here for the deck, and you got a gate here for the other fence there.
You'd have to go beyond that.
You'd have to go beyond that.
But then the problem ensues, if the dogs are on the deck, they can jump over the lower rail.
Exactly.
That's the problem.
That's the problem.
Which is not four feet.
And I can put a wireless doorbell on the fence.
I guess the question is, did the board want them to put the extra fence in the front? That...
I don't feel that it's necessary for Harley.
For, or Cash. I don't either.
My, Mr. Chairman, if I may, my concern is just the other residents in the neighborhood have a right, in my opinion, to peaceful enjoyment of their property, and if the animals are escaping, you know, as this has happened repeatedly, that's kind of infringing on that, and so because there's a history of that, that's why I'm offering that amendment.
Okay. I appreciate your offer. However, the Animal Control Officer feels that the four-foot chain link fence in the back and the stockade fence in the back will be given the security that we need.
For these particular dogs.
Right, for this particular dog.
Can I also, am I right in understanding that if these dogs get out again, there's nothing say they can't come back to us and be deemed dangerous or something, you know, you know, so this isn't a final thing that, you know, if these dogs get out again, they're probably going to come back to us, so...
And they're a nuisance dog. They're not, they're not a dangerous dog, so I don't, I'll go along whatever the board says. So why don't we take Robert's amendment?
Can I?
Yes, Tim, I'm sorry.
I just want, I just want further clarification. So if there's four-foot, you know, measurement, if the same parameters that you're asking for out front are out back, I don't understand the need to have the fence out front. Like, I understand the protection, but if that, it would be adding a secondary fence on the front, and then the back, it doesn't, that fence doesn't go to the right side of the house, it just ends at the back, correct? The chain link, where the gate is?
No, it comes, sorry, I wish I had a diagram. So there's the house, it comes off the house.
Off the right side?
So it does go out to the right some, yes.
Towards the property line and then goes towards the back of the property line?
Yes.
Okay, and the gate is facing the street?
Yes.
Okay, so you're asking to basically extend that fence and move it all, come to the front or just to the right of the door?
Well, my understanding from what the owner, through the chairman, what the owner had said was that there would be a new fence that would go from the walk for the front door, then go parallel to the front of the house, and then meet up with that other existing fence there, and that would also have a gate. So the idea would be if the dogs got through that first gate, there would be a secondary place that they would be captured, that they wouldn't be able to just leave the property, and the owner's already said he wants to do it, and I just wanted to codify it as part of the requirement.
I would...
So let's vote on that. I, I'll call for vote. Does anybody want the owner to have to put a second fence in the front yard? Amy?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No. So we're going to go with the original fence, the four-foot fence in the back, without being over, in my opinion, it would be overkill. So now we'll go back to the original motion, which would be that we declare Harley a nuisance dog based on the fact that he was part of a group of dogs that attacked two people, with the conditions that he be humanly restrained with a leash when they leave the residence, that the homeowner have a minimum of a four-foot secure fence around the backyard of the property, that while the animal is being taken from the back, from the back door of the house to the backyard, that he be put on a leash, and that a microchip be implanted in his body, and that this all be done within thirty days.
I make that motion.
I second that.
I will call for the vote.
Yes.
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 I vote yes. All right, so we've taken care of Harley, and we've taken care of Cash. They're both nuisance jobs. You've got a couple of conditions that you have to meet, and you got thirty days to do it. All right, now, let's do the, well, let's talk about Stormy. All right, you want to go Diesel?
Let's go Diesel.
All right, let's talk about, you guys all set, Tim with Diesel, Robert? We'll talk about Diesel next, okay? Let me read the recommendation. According to Kelly, I make a recommendation that Diesel be deemed a dangerous dog based on the credible evidence presented at this hearing. Although there is no proof that Diesel had actually bitten anyone yet, he has exhibited unprovoked aggressive behavior towards people. The definition of a dangerous dog in MGL 140, Section 136A, is as follows: A dog that either, one, without justification, attacks a person, or domestic animal, causing injury or death; two, behaves in a manner that is reasonably, that is a reasonable person would believe poses an unjustified threat of physical injury or death to a person or to a domestic-owned animal. All right, and Kelly recommends the following conditions: The dog be humanely restrained, provided however that no order shall provide that a dog deemed dangerous be chained, tethered, or otherwise tied to an inanimate object, including but not limited to a tree, post, or building. I recommend these methods of restraint, all right? Containment area in front of the house around the front door in case someone accidentally opens the door. The fence should be made out of chain link or in some other secure material and be at least six feet tall. B, all doors and gates must have self-closing mechanisms. C, there must be padlocks on all gates except the front deck gate and the gate into the backyard, which must have metal clips to keep the mechanism from being bumped open by a dog. D, the wire fence under the deck near the pool must be a thicker gauge wire such as a chain link. Number two, that the dog be confined to the premises of keeping of the dog, keeper of the dog, provided however that confined shall mean securely confined indoors or confined outdoors in a securely enclosed and locked-up pen or dog run area upon the premises of the owner or keeper, provided further that such a pen or dog run shall have secure roof, and if the enclosure has no floor, secured to the side thereof. The sides shall be embedded into the ground not less than two feet, and provided further, within the confines of such a pen or dog run. A doghouse or proper shelter from the elements shall be provided to protect the dog. I recommend that the sides be embedded two feet into the ground in order to make this fence secure enough to contain Diesel. Diesel must be contained to the backyard when he is outside, not the deck area. Number three, that when removed from the premises of the owner or from premises of person keeping the dog, the dog shall be securely and humanely muzzled and restrained with a chain or other tethering device, having a minimum tensile strength of 300 pounds and not exceeding three feet in length. Number four, that the owner or keeper of the dog provide proof of insurance in an amount of less, not less than $100,000, ensuring the owner or keeper against any claims, loss, damage, or injury to persons, domestic animals, or property resulting from the act, whether intentional or unintentional. Of the dog are proof that reasonable efforts were made to obtain such insurance. If a policy has not been issued, provided however that if a policy of insurance has been issued, the owner or keeper shall produce such policy upon request of the hearing authority or a justice of the court, and provided further that if a policy has not been issued, the owner or keeper shall produce proof of efforts to obtain such insurance. Number five, that the owner or keeper of the dog provide to the licensing authority or animal control officer or other entity identified in the order information by which a dog may be identified throughout its lifetime, including but not limited to photographs, videos, veterinary examination, tattooing, or microchip implantations, implantations.
Implantations.
Thank you. Or a combination of any such methods of identification, I recommend the microchip and pictures. And last but not least, that the board require the Benway to complete all orders within thirty days. So those are the conditions. We'll open it up to the board.
Can I add one? Can I make a change?
Sure.
Okay. So, thinking about it and watching Diesel jumping up, I think that, you know, I recommend that the fence in the front be six feet high, and I believe the back fence needs to be six feet high too, just to be, and it's only four feet high right now.
So the fence in the front you're talking about was probably what Robert was talking about?
Yes.
For the other dogs, that you want an additional fence, fence in the front, six feet high.
Yes, especially around the front door, because there's nothing, you know, the Benways do have young children in the house, and I know my daughter, when she was younger, you know, opened the door and leave it open, and I don't want that to have to be on children, you know, to have that responsibility, so I think as an added...
And that's because the other dogs were nuisance dogs, with this dog is a
Right.
A danger, dangerous dog and more of a risk, so. All right?
I'm sorry, did you already, did you already order that he's a dangerous dog?
No, we have nothing.
No, we're about to have the vote.
I just, we just want to, I just wanted to read the conditions, and I'm opening it up for discussion. Amy?
So I have a question on the fence they are asking for the backyard. Section two of this says that the dog can be confined when he's in the yard. So he won't have free, he either has to be on a lead or in a pen?
No, so there's no lead. So if you, if you deem a dog a dangerous dog, and the dog is going to be loose outside in a pen, the pen has to be, they don't really speak about how tall it has to be, but if it's, if it doesn't have a roof on it, a solid floor and a roof on it, it has to be embedded at least two feet in the ground, so they can't dig under it. And I know that in the past, we have had a dog that was deemed a dangerous dog, and they took rebar, like two feet sections of rebar and pounded him into the ground, two feet down every, I believe it was every six inches.
All right, yeah.
So if we're, but that's, if we're requiring the dog to be confined outdoors, we're also saying we want a six-foot fence as well?
Okay, we're not requiring them to be outdoors. They can go indoors.
No, I know, but I mean, when he's outside, he's confined to a pen or...
Yes.
Backyard, or a six-foot fence.
But we also need a six-foot fence in addition to him being...
Well, I, yes, I believe so with the jumping ability of Diesel.
Yeah, that's what I'm just...
Yeah.
Trying to understand.
So does he, does he need the pen with the roof and the cement floor plus the six-foot fence for the backyard?
He needs either one or the other.
So if he builds a pen in the backyard that has a roof on it and a cement floor, he doesn't have to have a six-foot fence?
He doesn't, but I'm going to tell you, I, I don't know, just...
So if he puts up a six-foot fence, or if he puts up an eight-foot fence, does the dog still need to be confined when he's in the yard, or can he run around?
Yeah, so when they say confined in the yard, they mean, yeah, he can run around in the yard.
If the fence in there, it's confined in that fenced area. He doesn't need to build a pen.
Well, this says confined, you know, in a locked pen and dog barn.
Well, that's the option.
There's two options, basically.
So securely enclosed would be the higher fence.
Right.
Thank you, all right.
Mrs. Benway, you have a question?
It's getting late.
I've ordered a dog pen. It's eight feet high, and I think it's eight by 12. So if I use that, do I have to put up the six-foot fence?
Not according to what she's saying, right?
And if I pour a cement slab?
You put it on that, you could keep the dog in there.
And it has to have a roof on it, too.
Yeah, I know it's got a roof, and I can...
So, yes.
Okay.
So if he does that, he doesn't have to put a six-foot chain link fence in, and he doesn't have to go into the ground. So you have a choice.
Yeah.
All right, and it sounds like your choice is you want to put an eight by 12?
Well, I ordered one just...
Pen with a roof on it and a cement floor, and you'll be fine. Right?
Mm-hmm.
You okay with that?
Yes.
Any, anything else?
Um, no, I think I'm good. I...
Well, if you think of something, we'll come back to you. Dennis?
Um, the front fence has to be six feet also, and that's in, so that would contain the front door and that side deck area, correct?
That's kind of where, I guess you would have to make a decision, like how, I was specifically thinking about the front door at that point in time, just in case somebody came out the front door. There's nothing there to protect it.
See, I have a concern about that deck. That dog gets out that door again, he can jump that railing. That's only, it's 37, 38 inches, whatever. There's, almost any dog could jump that, you know, so I have a concern that if we're going to put another fence in the front, where do you stop it? You know, I know what you're saying, that you just bring it around and then to the deck. Yeah, okay.
Go all the way down to the side of the deck.
Yeah, but then you got to get down and around the side, because that goes down to the pool and stuff.
That's why I was saying, it was continuous.
That's ridiculous.
Because you'd have to do the pool enclosure at that point to maintain the height, so that, I understand it's going to, it will definitely work if one of the, if the front gets left open.
Correct.
But from, if you're from the other door going there, if the dog, if any dog gets loose, mind you, not, at this point, none of them will be off-leash, you know, while they are on the deck, but they could be.
Right, they could get out that door.
It has the, right, because that's how, you know, the house is operated with that open specifically. They've installed a screen door, basically, a magnetic screen, because that's how they utilize it.
So, yeah. So what if they put a six-foot fence, you see with the white, see the steps going up on the side? Start from there, come straight down along the grass, go along the road, and go to the right side of the front door. That whole section...
We're saying the deck, so the left side edge that's against the driveway?
Leave the deck where it is, and just put a six-foot fence coming out in the front of the yard.
I agree with that. I think that's...
The dog would have to, I think that's what you were getting at.
That's a great idea.
The dog will have to go down the stairs, and now they're going to be, he's not going to be able to jump from the deck over the fence.
Sure he is.
He can't stay, no, he can't stay on the deck.
If they're coming, if that back door is left open so they can leave the screen for air to come in, and that dog, for whatever reason, wants to come out of there, it's going to jump that. It's going to jump that.
Right, but all I'm saying is with the, can I go up there? Can I approach the picture?
Yeah.
You're the chair.
No, sit down.
What I'm saying is, if you took a six-foot fence and went from here...
Yeah.
all on the driveway, cut across the front of the road and have it into the side of the steps. So if the dog gets out of here, he's down on the ground, he can't jump that.
Yeah, but he can.
He can jump that, but we already said he can't hang out on the deck.
On the other side.
He can jump to the left of that.
Into the driveway.
Into the driveway.
But we already said they can't stay on the deck, so when they take the dog out on leash.
If that door is open.
You need to get up for nothing?
If that door is open, most people open their doors and have the screen, allow air to come in. You get me? That door is open, that dog gets aggravated and for whatever reason and sees somebody and comes out, he's going to be able to jump right over the left-hand side of that and into the driveway.
Because you want a six-foot fence on, you're adding a new fence on the front at six feet.
Right.
Everything else, you'd have to do everything at six feet that.
I hear what you're saying.
You know what I'm saying? Because they're capable of jumping that.
Can we ask that a screen, like a regular storm door be put on that side door? So that it's not the magnetic, I mean, I have the magnetic in my house, so my dog, I understand why you do that. He comes in, he goes out, he goes in all day long, but I have an eight-foot stockade fence in my backyard and my dog can't get out.
You'd have to do that. You'd have to, you'd have to change the left side of the deck fence to six feet.
Well, I mean, if you put a storm door in there, even if a kid opens the door inside to come out, he's going to see the dog before the door gets out of the house because there's a storm door there.
I like that idea because the front has a door that is manually open and then the other one. Sir, are there self-closing latches on your current storm door in the front? Okay, so, I mean, it's, that's a tough, it's such a tough call, like how do you?
I, I would be, I mean, we can't require the homeowner to put a new storm door on. I don't think that's.
I asked.
But, but I don't think, but if he was willing to, then that would, yes, the fence in the front would be a second barrier and they'd have to somehow get through that storm door to get out onto that deck, so that would be. I'd be in, I just see, I am just seeing the purpose of the fence here, but I'm just looking at that deck and saying it's useless, you know.
Yeah, I'm with you.
So, you know, you're requiring the homeowner to put something up and as Robert said, we're kind of protecting the neighborhood, but we're not. Because that dog, you know, look at how that dog jumped in the video, so.
So what if you put the side rail on the deck, make that six feet?
That's a heck of an expense. What's it going to look like?
Well, that's the.
Poor guy. I wouldn't be in favor of that, no, personally, that's my.
I'll just throw out ideas.
Mr. Chairman. So, I don't know if this is really even a viable solution, but to have the six-foot fence, instead of it stopping, having it go across the driveway with a gate. Of course, then we have to trust that they'll close the gate when they pull the car into the driveway, but.
Then what happens on the left-hand side of the driveway where there's no fence?
I thought there was a fence along the boundary, no?
No, it's not.
No.
No.
It goes to the pool right there. It goes to the left side of the house.
It's a great idea if they had a fence.
I thought there was, no, the backyard is fenced in.
Mr. Chairman, would it be helpful to the board if we pull up an aerial of?
The backyard?
Yeah.
Because you've got the pool and then you've got the other.
I see what you're saying.
We're going to pull up an aerial.
I mean, I hate the.
Yeah, because I mean, now you're saying it.
But, you know, if we're going to, if we're going to order something, let's order something that's going to work.
Right, I agree.
That's the way, I don't want to just cause the guy grief.
Yep, take our time and get it right.
Am I driving or are you driving, Sam?
And then there's the pool. The pool is a chain link fence.
Right, but there's no chain link fence on the left side of your driveway, right?
This is a weird mouse.
You know, not until you get past the pool.
See, you know, Tim, I'm blown away with this.
Okay.
Two seconds.
Just, this is like my block.
I'll teach you, Dennis.
The little fence here, the big fence here on the other side.
Right. See, so they got nothing on that side.
They'd have to continue it down and retie it back in somehow. I do have one question on that, while we're on that, because, you know, the discussion is what to add because of the deck rail being lower than what other things that we would like to require. Where that, where the pool deck meets the pool on that left sideline, is there something, anything stopping the dogs from walking the edge of the pool from the deck? Because I know most decks, is there a fence around the pool itself? At the height of the top of the pool edge to go up?
The top of the fence on the, on the deck goes all the way back and then it turns after the pool, there's a chain link fence.
But is there anything?
There's a fence around the pool though, but you don't have a fence around the pool, because the pool's on the.
Around the edge of the pool, I don't have a pool fence, no.
Okay, so if somebody were to climb, try to climb out of the pool, there's no fence stopping them from doing that?
Well, on the right side, they go into the backyard. On the left side, I put four by fours and I bolted them together so they can't get off the deck.
Okay, so they can't skirt around that end, okay. I understand that. Yeah, they're going in the pool versus being able to be on that edge and just kind of skirt around where it dead ends at the pool.
Right.
No, because I put, I bolted four by fours to the very end of the deck. So it's.
So they wouldn't do that?
Correct.
Okay.
So what do we want to do?
It's, if we're going to mitigate disaster with requiring the six-foot fence just in case somebody opens the door, how many just in cases do you do?
You know, my issue is, is not really hypothetical at this point.
Right.
So, you know, I don't know how practical it would be to increase the height on the southern, the southern deck rails. It's just not practical.
It can, you can, so with the driveway there like that, you could anchor them in the driveway, but you could also match it up if the structure of the deck is good. They have brackets that'll go from a two-inch galvanized pole, which he would be installing, which you could put two to three brackets of insulation. It wouldn't be an issue. You wouldn't even have to go in the ground. You could go on each post, which would actually give you a better-than-code recommendation because that deck is probably no more than six feet of railing.
You're saying to run a chain link fence, a budding, the deck that's there?
Right, taking the, taking two in, the two-inch galvanized posts or the inch and a half, whatever line post he's going to get, and then you attach them to the deck, so that fence is exactly what he was going to say with going from the right side of the door or the right side of the mailbox that's on the house and then coming around, encapsulating the walkway and then going, coming directly up to the driveway and then dead-ending it into that corner post, but then adding each rails at each post to continue that six-foot chain link fence, which would give you, actually it wouldn't. You'd have to, you'd have to raise it off the ground, but you can do it.
Yeah, but that'd be okay in that area because you're bolting it to the wooden structure and they're not going to get below that.
No.
So. Your idea would work there, yes.
And you'd have the mesh, you'd have the fabric of the chain link, the full six feet anyway.
Right.
So that, you know, they're not, they're not going under, they're finding ways around. That's why he put the four by fours up around that pool area. So I think, but then that, so that six-foot fence then would have to go all the way back.
To the pool.
To the pool. And sir, there's no, I mean.
That's a huge expense.
Sixty, eighty feet of fence, yeah, that's no joke.
Whatever the board decides.
Well, but if it's going to stop the dog from getting loose, I mean, there's no sense in putting a six-foot fence in the front of the house and leaving the deck the way it is, because.
Well, the thing is.
Robert's point, the dog can jump the.
If the homeowner did this, put the six-foot fence around the front door, all the way down that deck, the dog could be on that deck untethered.
Right.
Because then it couldn't get out.
If the dog can mistakenly go out the front door, the dog can mistakenly go out the side door.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't consent to having the dog on that deck untethered. Because at the, you know, because then it's, it's, somebody opens that gate and now the dog's already out into the next thing. I don't.
Opens what gate?
The gate, the gate for the, for the pool deck. You know, so it, so.
But you'd go out into the back of the yard, which has a six-foot high fence too.
Yes, I'm just saying I don't think that the dog should be allowed to remain on the deck.
On the deck.
I'd like, just even, regardless of the fence situation, just because it's just one gate, you know.
Yep.
I would agree with that.
So it sounds like.
Just a dumb question. What happens if I put a door in the house to the backyard?
It would solve all my problems.
No, because somebody could still.
I know, I know, I know.
Somebody could still open the front door and dog out.
That's right. You could still go out there.
Might be cheaper to.
I couldn't do it, but I mean, in my son's room, I could put a door to the backyard.
If you could get a six-foot chain link fence, six feet above the deck. I guess that's what we're talking. All the way to the pool and then fenced in the front a little bit, that would take care of the issue.
I mean, the whole issue of this front deck is if that door, dog gets out that front door or that side door.
They're gone.
They're, they're contained, but they're not really contained on the side door because that height of that railing is so low.
So couldn't you just come off the front of the house? So you are coming off the doorway.
Yeah, come across.
Going across and then going back. So you would have.
Saying.
Well, you would have the deck enclosed in that six-foot chain link.
Correct, right.
The six feet has to go from the floor of the deck up six feet. That's what we're saying.
Right, yes, in that location, right. But the, the chain link coming around to the deck could be a ground, would be a ground level.
So we want six feet of fencing from the deck floor up six feet all the way back.
Down, you got it, yep.
That's what we're asking. Tim, we on the same page? That. I, I don't care what kind of fence it is, I guess, but that's, I think that's the issue.
But if we're doing six feet tall for Diesel, wasn't it stated earlier that some of the fence in the back is not six feet tall?
That's true too.
So.
Like he wanted to do the pen.
It's going to be in a pen.
So the only thing we're mitigating now is if the dog comes off leash in process.
Yeah, if he comes out the front door.
Or off the side door.
Right.
Tethered or not.
We don't need a six-foot fence in the back because he's going to put Diesel and an eight-by-12 pen with a roof and all that.
Got it.
That's a good question, but.
Can I just jump in? What I'm hearing though is if you have, if, if the dog gets off leash, right, and you're saying that you have this requirement of six feet in the front if it gets off leash, and then it gets off leash, bypasses the containment unit right in the back and you have, what is it, four and a half feet? So if four and a half feet is sufficient for the backyard, then four and a half feet should be sufficient for the front yard and if four and a half feet is insufficient for the front yard, then it should be insufficient for the backyard.
I agree.
Except for the fact that he's putting the dog in a pen. So I'm assuming that when you go from the house to the pen, you get the dog on the leash.
Correct.
I would like to say one thing too. Some of these, like the containment areas, like in the front or the, even the deck, the dog's not supposed to be out there unless it's on a leash. It's strictly for, if the dog like momentarily got loose, there is another barrier there. Which is true in the backyard too. If he, if he was bringing the dog to the pen and it accidentally got off the leash, there is another containment area. It's, but it's not something they're going to be turned out in and left alone in.
Right. My concern is with that, that the, the dog owners have already, you know, kind of set a precedent with the fact that they, the dogs have been out for a longer period of time when they do get out. So I don't, I don't know that it's going to be a quick reaction just because that fence is there if it's going to slow them down. It may initially, like you said, the back deck, the back deck rail on the right side of the pool going to the fenced-in area in the back will, is still 38 inches. So that, and if we're mitigating the front left of the deck to the pool, it's at six feet, you also have to do the rest of the yard because if they can jump the deck on one side, they can jump it on the other.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I totally agree with the assistant manager's point. We can't be arbitrary about it. If we set a standard, we have to stick with it. And, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be that they do the whole backyard, but they could have a six-foot fence that went from the gate where the pool deck is, go from there to wherever the, the dog's new confinement area is and then, but then they would have to wrap the six-foot around the back of the deck as well. You know, it's.
And the other side of the yard.
It's up to the ACO to kind of, you know, maybe that's the best thing is to just give the ACO the direction that all, all fences need to be six feet and then the ACO can work with the, the homeowner to determine like what the, because I mean, this is going to be very expensive. And, you know, as long as we can hit that six-foot all the way at every part of the containment, how they get there isn't necessarily important because I don't know how much fence is going to be required if they want to do the whole backyard in six foot. I don't know how long those stretches are, what would be cheaper.
Well, we know we want a six-foot fence in the front. We know we have to deal with the deck. We want six feet above the floor of the deck. And now we just got to, if, so if he put a six-foot fence in the backyard, he wouldn't need a pen.
He would have to put a six-foot fence and he has to put it, the rest of the fence, two feet in the ground. Like, like I said, instead of like digging it up and burying an actual fence, he could bang in the rebar. But it is a pretty big area. I don't know. I don't know. Are you, are you able to hear what they're saying?
A little.
Kind of, yeah. We were talking about putting rebar in the ground because it's a state law. Some of this stuff is state law, so the fence would have to go two feet in the ground. And if they're requiring a six-foot fence all the way around anyway.
In the backyard.
Then you, it probably would make more sense for you to put the fence two feet in the ground instead of building a special pen. And the dog would like it better too, to be quite frank with you.
So what we're saying, what we're suggesting, and correct me if I'm wrong, we don't want a four-foot fence in the back. Make the whole backyard six feet, so you don't have to buy a pen. You got to make sure that the fence goes in the ground two feet. Put a six-foot fence in the front and then put six foot, a feet of fencing above the floor of the deck. So everywhere the dogs are, there is a six-foot fence.
Can I add to the top of my deck fence?
Sure. That would give you six feet, yep.
Yeah, if you want to raise the deck fence up two feet, I don't know if they got higher deck or you could put a solid, make a little solid thing there or something. We want six feet above the floor of the deck. We'll do the front, make sure I'm saying this right, guys. We want to do the front of the house from, from the gate by the.
We want all the doors enclosed.
Along the driveway, go along the road and then to the right side of your front door. That should be a six-foot fence.
He's got to go all the way down to the road? I thought.
No, just to the walk.
Just the walk, all right, just the walk. He just saved you a ton of money. Just the walk, okay, that's fine.
Up to the driveway and then up to the corner post on the deck to the left of the gate.
Mr. Chairman, I believe Ms. Lutimer Stellonis.
Come on up.
Real quick. I might want to check. I don't know if fire code, you got a fence in the front door in a second egress?
Oh.
Oh.
Thank you.
Yeah, we've done that before because it's still got a gate.
I don't see any.
They still can get in and out. They're not, in and out of the structure.
You can't have it locked.
It can't be locked.
It can't be locked, right. What, what they would need, what, what they should have is the pool, the pool latches that you have to pull up or push down. It's an automatically closed door. There's no way a dog, no way a kid can open those things. That's the kind of, the heck with these things with the forks with the padlock because you don't put the padlock on, right, the dog can open that up. But if you had those kind of latches, yeah, they're a couple of bucks more, but.
Nope, I, I understand. I just want to make sure that there's not going to be a fire code, that we're not, that once it gets installed, he spends the money to do it, that Deputy Chief Sellers does his inspections and says.
Exactly.
It's against fire code. You block two egresses, now you're putting a lock on the gate on top of that.
That particular gate going out of that premises would have to have a, a special latch. Couldn't be one of those things with a padlock, yep. That need to happen.
I understand what you're saying, that it's the one where you're going to pull up on the lock to release.
Yep.
And I don't know.
Call a pool, pool lock.
And I don't know if you consider that a lock or not. If you consider that a lock and he's got little children, now there's a, if there's a fire and they've got to leave.
If the child is.
They can get into that fenced area.
Yeah, they can get out of the structures.
Out of the structure. So they're out of the structure.
How about if we do this? We'll, we'll set the conditions if we go there. And then you check with the fire chief to make sure it's okay before he goes ahead and spends anything.
And if it's, and if it's not, come back.
If it's not, you'll have to come back before the board and we'll have to make an adjustment.
Yep.
All right, that, that, I think that's fair.
Yeah, tell me what I do with it. Okay, thanks.
All right, guys, so where are we at? We want six feet of fence everywhere. Chain link. We want, what kind of?
Or some.
Self-closing hinges.
Or self-closing hinges. Because he doesn't have to put chain link on the deck. If he wants to extend that up.
You wanna extend that up six feet.
Because he might be able to do a nice looking railing type of thing there.
Even if I've seen the lattice and stuff. Look at that, it's nice, you can do something nice there. Just make sure the dogs can't run through it.
Yep. But six feet in the front, six feet all the way around the back. And six foot high of similar along that lefty inside of that deck.
And in the backyard's gonna be six feet fence then, you don't need the, you don't need the dog pen, okay?
And all other conditions outlined by the ACO?
Yes, everything else, I'm fine.
Everybody okay with all the other conditions? Tim, are you all set with this now, with the new?
I'm good. You putting the self-closing and all that?
One C.
Wait, let me ask Robert, are you all set with?
I don't have a problem with these conditions.
Thank you.
Right, C, you're right.
One C, you can't have padlocks on all gates.
Right. Well, what do you want? We want self-closing hinges on all gates.
Okay, right, so that was for the gates in the back, because it says there must be paddocks on all, padlocks on all gates except the front deck gate and the gate into the backyard, which must have metal clips to keep the mechanism from being bumped open from, so you're still preventing the latch from coming undone, but it's just a clip instead of a lock, so that if somebody needs to get out.
Yeah, but if you don't click it, what's preventing the dog from, you know what I'm saying? We're still getting into, I wanna have a prevention net. If I forget to click it, it's the same thing as if I forget to put the padlock on, that dog can open that thing, okay?
So that's why I said all of the, all doors and gates must have self-closing mechanisms. So it should close and latch.
Yep. So what?
Right, if somebody doesn't put a clip on it, but I don't, all of these things are dependent on people.
Yeah, right, right.
Fortunately, you know, that we don't make any mistakes, which, you know, I don't know how you could have that like actually lock, like you said, without being some kinda fire code issue.
So for all pools.
The pool deck latches, they have the automatically closing deck, that thing latches. The only way you're gonna unlock that is to pick that thing up, then you can open that gate. You don't need any padlocks or clicks or nothing like.
Can I add something?
What he already has on those front gates, is it like a?
No, the, on the, the.
Not that, he doesn't have a U thing on the deck.
Can I solve?
Different kind of a latch.
Sorry.
No, on the front, he's got the little latch thing that you just flick by your hand and open it up.
It's like it's when you put on your belt.
Carabiner.
Yeah, no.
So, so I'd like to just, we can solve this right now, it doesn't actually have anything to do with the dogs. In order to have a pool, you have to have self-closing latches, and you have, and it has to latch itself. So self-closing, and it has to latch, and the lock has to be at 54 inches high.
Right.
So the piston one that he's talking about, it's a circle cap, it looks like an old knob you have on your dresser. You pull it up, it's a magnetic latch. So the self-close, that's the whole thing, how they mitigated with children getting, you know, drowning in pools. So currently, the current deck is even actually out of code for that because the deck, the, both decks are not self-latching. None of those gates are self-latching, and none of them, and they're not even, and they're not at the proper height. So they have to be at least 48 inches high, a 54-inch latch where it unlocks, so not just a 54-inch latch. It has to actually, at that point where you can put your hand on it, the mechanism to unlock it, that has to be 54 inches or better, just so a child can't do it. So I would say that's a recommendation anyways, because you have to have that for a pool by the law.
Right.
So what's, what do we, that's a good idea, so you two know that. So what do we put in for, what are the specs that we put in?
Whenever I've bought them, they're called a pool safety latch, and that's, that's what it's called.
So we want all gates to have a pool safety latch?
Yes, and self-closing.
Yeah, and self-closing. Because that thing, that makes it like Tim says, so it's 54 inches.
I'd like to add though, just being in the construction background, it's gonna be unlikely to find something that'll, looking at the weight of those wooden ones, I don't, you're gonna be tough, hard-pressed to find something, you may have to double up on the self-closing hinges, I don't think they'll have the power to close that.
The problem, the issue is if we got the six-foot fence down here, and then this goes to six feet, that gate doesn't matter.
Right. As long as the outer perimeter is six feet.
So that one particular gate, he could leave the way it is.
Both of them, the both wooden gates, right.
Correct.
So as long as the chain link, there's an existing single chain link gate now, there will be one added at the driveway area.
Right.
Those will both have to have the self-closing and the pool latch, magnetic latch.
Yep, sounds like this old house.
I've been on it.
Alright, so what we're gonna do is on letter C, instead of putting padlocks, we're gonna put pool safety latches with self-closing hinges.
Correct.
And that's included on the chain link gates in the backyard?
Yes.
We'll put it on all the gates.
They can't, there's no way, you take out human error there.
Yep.
It's gone.
And they're quick, some of these, and they adjust, so it has to have a proper adjustments to the weight of the material it's closing. So if a good professional that's doing it, or somebody that knows what they're doing, adjusts it properly because it has to be under a certain amount of weight.
Do those latches break on chain link fences?
100%.
Yeah.
A different, just different mounting hardware.
So you hear the requirements, you're okay with this?
He doesn't have a choice. It's up to us.
No, I know.
You have the ability to do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good way of putting it.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Just for clarity, if the board does eventually have a motion tonight, and this dog is deemed dangerous, and the homeowner finds that this is too cost prohibitive once he goes down that road, once a dog is deemed dangerous, does he have the ability to rehome the dog if this is cost prohibitive?
So he does have the ability to rehome the dog, but no matter where that dog goes in the state of Massachusetts, it's gonna be deemed a dangerous dog. He has to notify whoever is gonna take the dog that it's deemed a dangerous dog. And the people have to follow the same order that the selectmen here set up.
Thank you.
So it follows the dog?
Yes.
Unless the dog went to Maine, right? Because that happened years ago.
Yeah.
I don't know if you were here. It was a dangerous dog, and the dog ended up in Maine on some farm. That was to Robert's, because I was thinking the same thing, with Stormy, maybe.
If I rehome my dog back to the breeder that I bought him from in Connecticut?
It's out of state, so I don't know what the law is, but, yeah, if he sent it back to Connecticut, would he have to meet all our?
Who, Diesel in this case?
He sends Diesel to Connecticut.
We have to set up an order for the dog. And he, after it's in place, if he decided to rehome the dog, he can rehome the dog. And he can rehome the dog wherever he wants, as long as he tells them that it's a dangerous dog. And then in the state of Massachusetts, somebody would have to follow the order. If the dog went to another state, I don't have any, we don't have any say in that.
Okay. So I asked for a motion, didn't I? We had the discussion.
I'll make the motion.
We made the motion.
With the changes we have, I would like to call for a vote. Oh, one other thing I wanna bring up. He's got 30 days to do this. Do you think that's realistic, that he can do all this in 30 days? I mean, we gotta be fair.
Depends on availability if he's hiring a contractor too, and materials.
Getting the materials.
At least.
How do we mitigate in that time period?
Right.
That's what I'm asking the board. I think 30 days is not very.
I do.
You think you could do it in 30 days?
Yeah, I can tell you right now, I, materials for fencing, he can get it. He can write down, I can give him a fence company and go right there and get it.
Well, you can't give anything, but.
No, well, no, I meant, but.
I know.
There is a local distributor that you can get the fence, no problem, they get plenty of it. As far as installing, well, that's another issue.
So you wanna leave it at 30 days?
I do, because again, I'm looking at a safety issue.
Tim?
I'm gonna go, now that I'm thinking about that, so for a six-foot fence, it's six foot and below, you do not need a permit, correct? Anything above six feet, you do?
Eight feet.
Up, that's what I'm saying, anything above six, sixty, okay. Just, I just wanted to clarify that to make sure that there wasn't another thing that would have to take place before that.
So you all set with 30 days?
Contingency on the materials, but then.
There's been situations in the past.
I'm not materials, but.
That people have asked for extensions.
Yeah, you can ask for an extension.
If they're having trouble getting everything done, as long as we know that they're really working on it.
Right.
You know.
We can see the purchase order and all that stuff.
Oh, we can tell it's staying.
I only get my disability check every 30 days, so I kinda have to work with that.
I guess, well, let's talk to the board. You are okay with 30, Robert, where are you at?
I don't have a problem with 30 days. My worry is, these are, you know, these changes are potentially very expensive, and I just, I don't want this to kinda get away from us, and this is just kinda going on and on and on, and I feel like we need to kind of make sure that there's some sort of control in place. You know, some, to get us from where we are today to where these mitigations are in place. I don't necessarily have an answer for what that should be. I'm just, that's my concern. Because, you know, tomorrow, we'll all wake up and the conditions of the property are exactly the same, and that's gonna keep going until, until these are taken care of.
Well, that's why we're asking, do you think 30 days is reasonable?
I, yeah, I think, yes, so to answer your question, yes, I think 30 days is reasonable, I'm just concerned about, I feel like we should have some sort of idea about what we wanna do from today to get to whenever the mitigations are actually installed. And if they're not installed in 30 days, well, that's another conversation.
So then maybe actively having the dog on a leash out back within the current fenced-in area, never going off leash in the current area. No, from the deck outside, on leash.
You're right, and I was saying.
While you're saying that, she's saying the same thing. So there are some things.
Until everything's done.
Well, we could do things immediately, like tomorrow, and I think that's what you're saying, and I think Robert was getting to that. To a certain, I guess we're all on the same page here, so let's put it this way, that number one, you could certainly do that immediately.
Correct.
Right, you can put the dog, restrain the dog humanely.
Well, yeah.
Right, tie him to a tree or something, is that?
No, 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 you can't, that's what you can't do.
Don't tie him to a tree.
Has to be a person.
Don't do that.
Adult person.
I guess the dog has to be on a leash, is that what we're saying?
Yes.
Yes.
Any others you think we could do right away?
At all times outside.
How about a muzzle? How about the dog has to have a muzzle, how's that?
In the backyard?
No, if he takes him.
If he takes the dog off the property.
Off the property, yes, but that was already in the order, right?
On property.
Like what can he do immediately?
The fence is what's 30 days, isn't it?
But this just says he's required to complete all orders within 30 days. That doesn't mean that the things that he can do immediately shouldn't be done immediately.
And that's what we're talking about.
Right. And this is only Diesel, so we're not, this isn't gonna be required for the other dogs. So only Diesel will have to be on a leash out back inside the confines of what's currently there.
And if you take him off property, it's gonna have a muzzle on it.
Or if he's on the deck, he has to be on a leash also.
Right.
Correct, from, yes.
Because he has to be on the deck leashed anyway, going to, well, until the rest of it's done.
Anywhere outside of the house.
So number three is what we want immediately, look at number three.
Yes.
Okay, so we want number three immediately.
Yes.
Part of number one, don't tie him to a tree though. The insurance thing you're gonna have to work on. The microchip, that's something that I guess could be done in 30 days.
How quickly can people get in to get microchipped?
That's a really good question. There are places like PetSmart, this Walmart does vaccinations and stuff, walk-in vaccinations, and I believe they do microchips there too. But it is very, it is tough to get an appointment at a vet right now, you're talking a month, a month and a half for non-emergencies.
So it sounds like everybody wants us to put 30 days. Except for the two things we talked about. And if you run into an issue, you can always come back and ask for, you know, show us that you're working on it, show us the purchase order and all this other stuff. You know, that you've done some other things with the microchip and stuff, and we can talk about giving you an extension. Is that okay, Kelly?
That is okay, I will address what Robert said too, like you don't wanna go, we don't wanna go forever, you can't get extension after extension after extension.
I'm aware of that, yes.
And there are pretty stiff, stiff penalties for disobeying the order, so you wanna just be careful about that, because.
Alright, so we're gonna leave it at 30 days, except for the couple things we're gonna make immediate. And go for there.
We need a motion.
And.
I don't know what it is.
Would you like one of us to do it?
You wanna make a motion? Alright, I'm looking for us to make a motion to declare Diesel a dangerous dog, based on the fact that he was a part of a group of dogs that attacked two individuals. About justification, and I recommend the following conditions. I already read all of this though.
Yeah, you could say the conditions is outlined by the ACO.
Alright, the conditions are outlined by the ACO.
Provided that, number one.
Alright, number one.
Occurs immediately.
No, part of number one, number one is A, B, C, and D, so number one. Let's see, the dog shall no longer be invited to the tree.
Self-locking gates.
You just have to be humanely restrained.
Yeah, the dog has to be, good point, thank you, Tim. That the dog be humanely restrained.
Effective immediately.
Effective immediately. That.
When outside the home.
And that outside the home muzzle, muzzling immediately.
The dog needs to be muzzled when outside the home.
And that you're gonna make an amendment.
And that's an immediately, and I'm gonna make an amendment. I'm gonna change one C to go eliminate, there must be padlocks and gates, to that they have to install pool safety latches and self-closing hinges. Okay, that's the change we're making.
On all gates.
On all gates.
54 inches high?
Yes.
Where the mechanism needs to be, is that what?
Yes, that was.
I would add, or current pool code. Because that will put you, I believe it's 54.
Our current pool code.
And then the fence.
And then the fence. And the fence needs to be on all locations, including the deck, has to be six feet high, and also has to be a ground, in the ground two feet. And we are recommending, or we are requiring a chain link fence.
Except on the.
Except on the deck, which, there has to be some kind of fencing six feet above the floor of the deck. And that's, this all be done, with the exception of the two things that we want immediately, done within 30 days.
I will make that motion.
Are you okay? Thanks for your help, guys, that was good.
Are we, are we doing number four also with the insurance and?
Yes, yeah. One through five.
Part of the statute.
One through six.
Per statute, okay, I second, thank you, I second.
Alright, I'm gonna call for the vote, Amy?
Yes.
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 I vote yes, let the record show five in the affirmative. Now we go to the last one.
As part of that motion, you said you did make the dangerous dog declaration, right?
Yes.
Is that right?
And I said why, Robert.
Yes, thank you.
I guess we have to say why, so.
Yeah.
That's the first thing you said.
We did that. Alright, let's go to Stormy. I'm gonna read the recommendation. I reckon, this is from Kelly. I reckon, this is from Kelly. My recommendation is that Stormy be deemed a dangerous dog based on the credible evidence presented at this hearing. Stormy exhibited extremely dangerous behavior by biting multiple times and abiding the abdominal area of Ms. Hanson. Bites to the abdomen indicate a dis, disemboweling bite which extremely, which is extremely alarming behavior. Stormy's bite history indicates that she is a level-five biter based on Dr. Ian Dunbar Dog Bite Scale. According to the scale, the dog is extremely dangerous and mutilates. The dog is simply not safe around people. I recommend euthanasia because the quality of life is so poor for the dogs who live out their lives in solitary confinement. And she's also notes that she sent a, uh, copy of Dr. Dunbar's Bite Scale to us. So, um.
That's her recommendation.
My, that's, that's our recommendation. Um, I guess, let's talk about it. What do the boards want to do? What do you guys want to do? What do you, nobody wants to put a dog down, but there's a lot to think about here.
You know, uh, I'm sure, as I've said for many years on this board, I've proven it by helping to build a dog shelter. I'm an animal lover, I love animals, but, um, the thing that really eats at my heart in this particular instance is the aggressiveness of that dog towards the children. Um, I think of that neighbor. I have a, I have a young grandchild about the same age, and, um, if that had been my situation, I'd probably be in jail because I would have killed the dog myself. Um, that, and to go after a child like we saw in that video, I'm sorry, I, I have to agree, I'll shut up. I agree with it, um, as much as I hate to.
Okay. Tim?
I'd like to see an opportunity for the dog to be able to live somewhere. I, I'd like, um, I mean, I mean, outside of that, I would, um, I, I, I'm not, this is the hard conversation, you know, but we have to have it. Um, I, I think, depending what those options are outside of euthanasia, I think they need to be discussed and explored. I think that, um, I think the dog does have opportunity. Um, I have a dog myself, we, we rescued her, um, and after she was spayed, she calmed down considerably. Um, she was never aggressive, but it, it definitely, um, it's recommended for temper, temperament. So I, I don't know, um, what that option would be outside of that, um, but the, the mythical farm sounds like a fantastic idea, and I'm sure that it could be explored. Um, I, I know there's programs out there for this kind of stuff, but.
Mr. Chairman, um, I think it's worth noting that, um, under the dangerous dog statute, um, quote, "No order shall be issued directing that a day, dog deemed dangerous shall be removed from the town or city in which the owner of the dog resides." And so, um, based on that, I don't know that we really have an option as far as directing that the dog be rehomed. I think that we're kind of, our hands are tied, and unfortunately, because, you know, my, as I said earlier, I'm extremely upset and frustrated that this issue got to us at a point where kind of our options are so limited. You know, if we had, in other cases, wherever there's been dangerous dogs in town, you know, something happens and the board makes some recommendations, and then either it's complied with or it's not, and then we go from there. Here, it's, it comes to us and it's kind of, you know, we're, we're already at the, the end step.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, I just want to ask, because you had made mention of this before, that this got to you delayed somehow because of staff. There, there is a procedural due process requirement here, where the board must first vote to order an investigation. The investigation has to occur. The dog owner has, you know, has to be given their opportunity to obtain legal counsel. And I can tell you that this matter was in your office the day after of the incident. But that procedural due process takes time. So it needed to get on an agenda of the Board of Selectmen for you to vote to start that process. So I, I just, i- if that's the suggestion, I'm going to stand up for staff, that this has been expedited, to the best that people can. This woman was here last night until seven o'clock at night, putting together everything so that you would have it today. This woman was here last night until seven o'clock last night, putting everything together today, and she spent the entire day tabbing out your packet. Okay? So I'm sorry that I'm upset, but I ha, I'm not going to let that stand on the record.
Mr. Chairman, could I respond?
Go ahead.
The first biting incident was in July. We found out about this after the second biting incident. Had there been an opportunity after that first biting incident, you know.
In July?
I never heard of that.
Can I respond to this?
Let's hold on. First of all, I want to say that the town, the people in the town at work are not on trial here. Okay? We have followed procedure, just like Jen said. All right? The process takes time. We got the complaint, you did initial investigation, you came to us, you asked us to put this on the agenda, to also allow you to do your investigation. We have followed the process to the T, and there is no way I'm going to allow anybody on this board put this on the back of town, of the, of the employees of the town. Okay? And if that's your point, Robert, I'm sorry, but the issue is that these folks have a dog, all right, that bit somebody, two people, and we want to stay focused on that. We went through the process, we followed it to the letter to the T, and that's all I'm going to say about it. So if you have any more comments, and if you would like to respond to that, go ahead.
I'm not sure if you're referring to the first incident where Ms. Martin was bitten. I, I'm not sure if that's what you're saying, I should have notified the board then?
May I respond, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, you may.
Uh, through the chair, yes, that would have been my opinion, and I understand, I, I read the report, I understand the circumstances. My hearing from the owner, that they only received the dangerous dog statute a week ago, maybe nothing would have been different. We don't get to live in that universe. What I would have wished would have been that, that conversation, that understanding with the owner happened then, that if your dog gets out and bites somebody, it could be euthanized. And maybe you had that conversation, it wasn't in her packet.
I went over to their house and examined all the gates and everything else, and I did talk about this with them at that point in time, a lot of this stuff. So, and the other thing is, when Ms. Martin was bitten, um, that is not something I would bring in front of the Board of Selectmen, because that, number one, it was the first incident, number two, she opened the gate and went through the gate, and if you look on here.
I totally understand.
Let her finish, let her finish, go ahead.
A dog cannot be deemed dangerous if at the time of, of the attack or the threat, um, the person or animal that was attacked or threatened by the dog had breached an enclosure or a structure. So that's why that was not brought to your attention at that time. I don't bring every single bite to the attention of the board, that you would be inundated. It's just not, it's not until it reaches a level that it would be, you know, possibly deemed a dangerous dog. Unfortunately, the second incident was a very severe incident, right?
And we don't want to have a third incident, and that's why we're having a serious time.
Right, exactly, yep, yep.
So we have to be very careful when we start accusing staff. We need to do our research, we need to make sure that our accusations are accurate, and you just gave an answer to that, so. Anything else? Tim, you all set? Robert, you made your comment, how, how do you feel about the euthanasia? You going to comment on that, or?
I'll, I'll make the comment.
When I joined this board, this was the thing that I was afraid of, that I would be in this position.
What position's that?
Of having to order people's animals, people's emotional support animals.
You're not the only one, I agree.
And that's just the one situation I didn't want to find myself in.
Yep.
And I understand the staff is upset with my comment, just understand where that comment's coming from. So I, I understand that we have to do what we have to do.
Is there a possibility of fixing Stormy, seeing if she comes down a little bit, and trying to see if we can find her a new home? I'm, I'm going to sit here and say right now, I'm sorry, sir, I don't think that Stormy can live in the same house with all the other dogs. So if we can save Stormy, I believe, I feel that she has to be an only animal in a home. She can't, she has a pack mentality, if she gets all these other dogs around her, she's always going to want to lead the pack. And if we even put her in a house with other dogs that are already established there, she could possibly kill them to be the leader of the pack. So, in my mind, if, the only way we could possibly save Stormy is to fix her and see if maybe we could find her a new home with a person who's trained to deal with dogs, like, what's his name, the guy?
Cesar Millan?
No, no, the one that's out in the Midwest that has the big, oh, you have to see him.
Oh, I can't remember his name.
El Capitan, though.
Um, I, we did have, we had.
Sure, come on up. I, when you talk about rehoming, and you talk about the place in the Midwest. Just give us your name, so.
Sorry.
Ed Hart, Assistant Animal Control Officer. Sure, Ed. There's a group called Best Friends. They take dangerous dogs. Their life is no better there than it would be in a normal kennel.
No.
It's, it's hard on the dogs.
I know, I know.
It is hard on the dogs. It's hard on her to be down there right now.
I know, I, yeah, I can.
Um, okay, I've been doing this for 10 years. The, this is the first time I've ever come in front of the board on the initial complaint and asked for a dog to be euthanized. I don't want to do it any more than any of you guys want to do it. But I stay awake at night thinking about if this dog, especially if it goes back to that house, and a little child, or even another woman, gets mauled by this dog. There's an ACO in Lunenburg, I don't know if I already said this or not, but, um, 75 years old, he's been working around dogs his whole life. He was mauled by a dog so severely, I don't even know if he's still going to make it. They put him on life support, they took him off life support, they put him back on, from what I hear. Chunks missing out of his limbs. I don't want to see that happen. And as much as I love dogs, and we've had da, like, dangerous dogs down, really, they were labeled dan, or dangerous dogs, that we've gotten along with great, and I love them, but a person's life or severe injury is not worth, a dog is not worth that, as much as I love them. And I know this is a really hard decision, I wouldn't, I don't envy any of you having to make the decision, but I just want to do what's right by the people in the neighborhood and any other person that this dog could really hurt in the future.
Any other comments? Follow up, what Robert said, I, I feel the same way. This is the decision that I never wanted to make.
None of us have.
None of us, though. I don't think there's a person on this board, and I know everybody, some better than others, I don't think there's a person on this board that would want a ham, a ham and animal. But we've had three different people come to us, who are, the police department recommends euthanasia, they saw what happened there. You recommend it, this is what you do for a living. The dog trainer came, she recommended it. Ed's just said the type of life that the dog would have, being basically in a kennel, you know.
Right.
Three-by-five kennel the rest of his life. Uh, it's a very, very difficult decision. Um, I do want to thank the board, however, because we're here at 11:15. I think we've thoroughly, all of us have gone through this, and we, I think, dotted every I and crossed every T. We've allowed everybody to speak, we went back and forth on some solution. I think the three of the dogs have an opportunity with the proper care of the owner, and this rests on you people. We're here because of you people, right? We're not here because the town did something wrong, or that the dogs did something wrong. It's your responsibility to make sure that these dogs are confined and are not a nuisance to the neighbors, okay? Well, they're more than a nuisance, this particular dog. And I'm, I'm sorry that, I'm, I'm going to vote to go ahead and, based on everything I've heard, my, my motion, I'm going to look for a motion that we do put the dog down, and it's probably one of the, probably the worst decision, and I'm sure, putting all the politics aside and all the crap we go through, you know, with one another during the campaign, this is far worse than anything. Okay? But, um, I think that is a dangerous dog. I think the fact that the dog has attacked people in a way that it was trying to kill somebody, okay? When they're a level-five bite, you go, when you go after somebody's abdomen, you're trying to kill that person. And, uh, I, I just feel that, you know, I feel very badly about this, but, um, I think we have to do the right thing for the neighborhood, and for the town, and for the dog, and for the dog. We're not going to put the dog in solitary confinement, that's just my opinion, so, um, but the, probably the biggest regret I'll ever have, I'm looking for a motion that we declared Stormy a dangerous dog, based on.
Ask one question before we make the motion.
Well, let me make the motion, and then we can.
I just wanted to ask Kelly one question.
All right, go ahead.
Do we euthanize the dog? Like, you, do you take the dog to the, or does the vet come to the kennel? And is he able to go and be with the dog during the euthanization?
I believe that we would be the ones to actually bring the dog, I mean, the owners are responsible.
Whatever's easier for the owners.
Is he allowed to be there?
I don't see, well, as far as I know, yes, yeah.
Okay, that's, I'm just.
So, I'm looking, uh, going to declare the dog a dangerous dog.
Based on?
Based on several things. Number one, that he did attack two people. Uh, the bites were severe, they were a level-five, uh, according to that scale, the Dunbar scale, which means level-six is you kill somebody, so there's no sense in, that we have a recommendation from the police department, people that were there that day, that witnessed this event. Uh, you, after doing this for, I don't know how many years, it's really the first time that you've recommended this, right?
Yes.
All right, so that, you don't, you don't do this often, and also that you had a professional person come here, uh, and, um, kind of give us, her a professional opinion as to if there's any shot at rehabbing the dog. Uh, and, um, I'm making a motion that we do euthanize the dog, and, uh, based on, uh, based on those conditions. So I'm calling for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I'll have a second.
Second.